Looks like we have everybody.
Hello, everyone. This is Matt Komkar.
Hey, Matt.
Welcome.
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 Welcome, Matt.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you guys in person or sort of in person, but live.
Yeah, great for me, too.
Hopefully it won't be too long when we can meet in person.
Yeah, we were almost there.
Exactly. Looking forward to that.
Commissioner Rivlin, you got tired of shaving again?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Robbie's Robbie's to director. Hey, when you're ready, I think we are. I see senior planner Stephen Rose is here. I'm here. I know we got a one item long agenda, but I just want to report anytime you're ready, we're ready for you to start.
Okay, perfect. Looks like we have everybody. Thanks very much. Good evening. Nice to see all of you. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for September 14. This is a special study session. The meeting will be conducted via telecommunications as in and is in compliance with provisions of the Brown Act and executive order and 29-20 issued by the governor. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioners Bookbinder.
Good.
Camkar.
President.
Ray.
Here.
Riblin.
Present.
Disher.
Here.
Vice Chair Ching.
Yeah.
Merrill Strasky.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and and move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any corrections or modifications that the we should be aware of? I'm seeing none. Do I have a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Was that Adam?
Yes, that was Matt's for second.
Great, thank you. Corinne. May we have a voice vote, please?
And Commissioners Bookbinder. You're blocked. You're muted.
Hi.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Hi.
Commissioner Cray.
Hi.
Commissioner Riblin.
Hi.
Commissioner Zisser.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ching.
Hi.
Prostrasky.
Hi.
Daryl.
Just a technicality, can Commissioner Kamkar actually vote on the last minutes? Or should he be abstaining?
I'd advise Robbie to community development director, since you weren't here, Commissioner Kamkar, I'd probably just advise you abstain.
Okay, we'll do. Change my vote to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, moving on to communications, Director Eastwood, do we have any communications, agenda items or changes for the commission this evening?
We don't in combination with the next item, agenda modification. So nothing from staff, neither communications or agenda modifications.
Great, thank you. All righty, moving on to oral requests. So I will open the public hearing. This is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may speak on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak for up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak?
We have some other.
Yeah, so I see Ishani with a hand up. Go ahead, please.
Hey, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, this is Raj, actually. Shani is my daughter's name. We use the same thing for the Zoom classes.
Hi, Raj.
Hey, so coming to the point, do I need to tell my address or not required at this time?
It's not necessary.
Okay, okay. So considering you folks are in a study session for the Envision Campbell, I would like to repeat my previous request of reconsidering the neighborhood plans for the city of Campbell, especially the St. Thomas neighborhood plan and stuff. I have been in touch with HOD at California, most of these neighborhood plans, especially the ones with like design restrictions and stuff, you know, in some of the cities, they are arguing that this is like culturally biased, the neighborhood plans are because this is like forcing people to follow certain stuff and not letting, you know, diversity in terms of design and plans to be existing in the cities, like people from different cultural backgrounds prefer to have like different kinds of stuff, right? So there should be, you know, some flexibility for people to allow architectures to bring from their cultural backgrounds, as long as it doesn't, you know, is not like objectionable to someone or something like that, right? Like, I know in Campbell, you cannot have like circular increase or something like that, like in the St. Thomas neighborhood plan, you cannot have like small circular stuff and things like that. So I mean, these are just design elements. They're not going to harm anyone, but you know, just saying like you just can have like straight planes and stuff, you know, prohibits people from bringing their culture to the house they are building and stuff. So I want the Planning Commission, if possible, as part of the thing that you are doing right now, to see if it is possible to eliminate those neighborhood plans or bring down the heavy restrictions. These were made like 30, 40 years ago, you know, they're not relevant in the current times. 50 years is a long time, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments around diversity, Raj. Technically, we this this part of the meeting isn't for items directly related to the to the items on the agenda, but I think your comments were kind of more broadly applicable than directly related to the agenda. So thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else have any thing to bring up that is not on tonight's agenda? All righty, well, with that, I will then close the public hearing and we will move to the agenda item this evening. So the purpose of this study session is to provide the Planning Commission an opportunity to review and comment on the administrative draft of the Envision Campbell general plan and recommended changes identified by staff. Staff will provide an update as to the process to date and overview of next steps. Feedback provided by the Planning Commission will be considered by the City Council on September 29. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stephen Rose to kick us off.
I'll start if you could.
Thank you.
I was asking you. Commissioner Robbie Stewart again, Community Development Director. So I hope you're all buckled in. So it's not a small document that we've given you. And so I'll just say a few words and I'll hand it over to Stephen. So as you know, the and I'm coming late to this. The city has gone through a multi-year process and updating its general plan to establish a advisory committee that advised it through the process. When I came on board and talked to the council, recognizing the status of the general plan, the need for housing element had advised the council and they agreed to combine the efforts. And so so tonight, what we'd like you to do, and I know, I know you're coming late to this. And we do apologize, but we do want your valuable input into the general plan is to review the document and advise the council on your opinions, advice on on the areas that are being revised. So it's a lot to take in. It's a big document. I know we gave it to you early. I know we gave you the staff report a little earlier, but still it's a lot to digest. So with your acknowledgement and blessing, as I put in the email earlier today and is in the staff report, we tried to, in order to to frame the time and make the best value, right? This isn't a lot of time to to help focus. We tried to break this up into three parts. I'll make this quick and Stephen will go into this more detail. One is just to set the table on how does this relate to, you know, the overall general plan process? Has this related to the housing element? Has this related to, you've had a bunch of work plan items you've asked our department to look into? How's this relate to objective standards? So we just want to frame this effort within those related work efforts because there is a lot going on and it's important that you understand the context. Two is, and Stephen will direct it to you, there's some pretty critical items from staff's perspective. We wanted you to weigh in early on. And this relates a lot to some land use issues and it will affect the environmental review process. So with your your blessing, we wanted you to to weigh in on those early in the general plan review process. And then finally, the third part of the evening, we've laid out what we think are more maybe more important topics in the general plan with some staff recommendations. But with that, we did want to open it up to the commission on how you'd like prioritize which areas to review. And I know we've gotten some feedback from some commissioners. But at the third part of the evening, we definitely wanted to to see if there's a priority from a majority commission to evaluate some sections over others, we absolutely would dedicate our resources and efforts into those. So anyways, three kind of major parts of the evening. And we intend to take some some big breaks, if you'd like, between those, because because this is a lot to go through. But with that, just wanted to lay out some expectations. And I'll hand it over to Stephen and he will take you into a deeper dive of how we're going to review it tonight.
Great, and thank you for that. And thank you. Good evening, Chair Strasky and members of the Planning Commission. As just captured, tonight's study sessions on the administrative drafts of the Envision Campbell general plan. So I'm kind of the a lot of the points that Rob had just gone over is that the the purpose of tonight's meeting is really your first opportunity to have reviewed the administrative draft and our plan and really provide us feedback. So this contextually was prepared back in August. So feedback that you might have provided to staff at various meetings since that date of last year will not be reflected in this draft. Moreover, staff now we're also digging in and really getting a feel of all of the policies and goals of this plan. We're trying to pull out those items which we think are a little bit more critical. And we're trying to bring those up to your review for and your attention tonight. We have upfront these two key priorities, which is the land use map exercise and floor area ratio. Why these are being prioritized over everything else does relate back to Sequo. So we have a critical project timetable that we're trying to achieve. I'll talk about another slide. But these are the two things which really move the needle. So they're going to affect things like number of trip counts, intensity, building intensity, relates to air quality analysis and a bunch of other things which we need to have pretty settled upfront. We're going to have additional time to redo refinement of policies in the coming months, even following this this first critical pass in December. As related work efforts, I think as we are all aware, we recently hired M group or Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Group to help us with their housing element update. I actually even saw he's one of we have our a member of their team, not in attendance tonight, but attending as a participant, just observing. We are also concurrently working on our objective standards update. That's really going through our entire municipal code, area plan documents, trying to refine policies which are a little bit vague and clarifying them that these are all come to head and be part of this general plan update, but not yet. The and also we're working on an economic development plan update. So we want to make it a little bit more robust and later on in this process, we're going to be looking at refinements to some of our policies and direction to try to reflect that. So with that, just in terms of meeting management, it's going to be a little bit of a different planning commission meeting in general. As opposed to us as staff, just going through the whole presentation and then stopping at the end and saying, is there a recommendation? This is going to be more of a working presentation. So we'll be stopping throughout the the meeting to solicit feedback and opinion on various points that we've raised on various items. But these are the four like real topic areas, the schedule, let you know where we're at right now in this update process. We're going to provide a refresher on what work plan items have been previously identified by the planning commission and which of those which were picked up by the city council and which of those which might warrant further discussion as part of this general plan update. Again, this critical items, land use map and floor ratio. And then in terms of the policy discussion, so we've got 11 sections of this general plan update process going on. And we're really trying to prioritize these first five, which we think the planning commission will hopefully agree on are the most critical, which are land use, transportation, community design, economic development, conservation, open space. It does not mean we won't have opportunities to talk about the others. We're just hoping we can maybe tackle those first. Go point by point on some of those items which we've raised in staff report, get a general feel of feedback from the planning commission on those points. And then at the end, we're going to have like a super slide, which we're going to talk about all those elements and area of policy sections which are not on the slide. And it's going to be a pretty rapid fire meeting tonight. So we're hoping to get quick summarized feedback. We're hoping to use time efficiently. We're not trying to have this meeting go to midnight unless we have to. It's okay to disagree with the staff recommendations. So a lot of these which we raise are just really to kind of prompt discussion. And hopefully give you some guidance and hopefully move on where we don't need to have more discussion than we have to. Again, we're trying to avoid discussion on the housing elements, housing sites, Rena, housing, regional housing needs allocations. All that stuff needs to be tabled for a further discussion. So we're going to have a a training session. We're targeting the the week of the fourth in October with the city council. It's not firm yet. But we will have a dedicated planning commission meeting October 26, which will be a deep dive on that. So we want to save this really is the commercial industrial. There's other changes to our land use map and the overall document in terms of its policy and setup. And again, probably as you guys review this document, you might have observed typos, grammar, opportunities to do some wordsmithing, unless it really affects like the the conveyance of a the way that a policy is being conveyed, we're going to try to skip over those conversations to the extent possible. With that, I mean, this is going to be one of our first breakpoints. We want to make sure we're on the same page before we we dive into the the first two major items. But that sounds good for everyone. Maybe I can defer to the chair.
Yeah, so does anyone have any concerns? I think that sounds really great to me. Thanks for outlining all of that, Stephen.
I have a question. A question. Stephen, thank you for putting this together. I realize this is a humongous task. Question, if is homelessness as an issue part of the housing element? We shouldn't be discussing issues relating to homelessness at this meeting?
I would say there's probably policies which, I mean, a lot of these things do overlap to some degree, like it could be related to the safety element. I'd say you're trying to provide housing for the homeless. That's obviously a housing related policy discussion, but if you feel as if there's other elements that it touches on other than housing, you could potentially raise those as related policy discussion. We will have an opportunity, I would like to just mention, if we have policy discussions that come out as as a matter of fact of of the housing element discussion that relate or touch, need to touch on these other elements, if we need to revisit the safety element to address something which we identify in the housing element, we will have an opportunity to do that. Again, what we're really trying to get is what are those key items like these, the floor ratio and the land use? I mean, these are things which we need to study early on to get the sequel done. We'll have a little bit more time to work on policy development. So if we identify something, again, as now coming to find the housing element discussion, we will have another chance to revisit.
Thank you. Thank you. That really answers the question. I appreciate.
Great. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and.
Can I ask one quick question, Steve, just before you get get going? Just to put in context for me, because I know, I don't know, some of the other commissioners, it was way back in 2018, when the general plan consultants had workshops and I attended one of them. It was really interesting stuff. But but you just mentioned in your in your presentation that the staff is is just right now digging in to the general plan, proposed general plan update. So I just wanted, I'm just trying from my perspective to get a sense of the general plan committee, advisory committee, did they have they been meeting? I mean, the my workshop was in early 2018. So have they been meeting regularly? Is there a lot of staff input already into this project and has it gotten a pretty good review by an interested group of citizens of Campbell?
Yeah, what I'll offer there is the the general plan. So the city council kind of took a different tack. They really want to engage. They want to have the the an advisory committee formed of the citizenry of our community, which we're going to act as like lightning rods for the community in various areas and pockets, representing a very broad brush of the neighborhoods and communities. So you didn't get polarized comments that really relate to just one or some single, single issue commenters. So they it was a great effort to try to get a large group and and collective group of comments. I believe they met 18 times, not including maybe two joint meetings with the city council as well. So it's they've had a lot of meetings and a lot of that's actually documented, I think, on the second or maybe the last page of tonight's report and kind of provides a detailed history of all the steps leading that culminated in what you're seeing before you tonight, which is this this administrative draft of the general plan. There's a bunch of other policy documents. They went through, the general plan advisory committee went through element by element, policy by policy to bring us to where we are today. Staff was, we were taking more of a hands-off role in this process because we didn't want to unduly influence the general plan update process. Now that we're kind of bringing this thing to a head, we understand that there are opportunities to always improve and try to clarify where we're at in this process. And so that's where you're seeing a lot of these recommendations is your feedback, which we would even be providing to the consultant in a in a typical scenario in this draft review. So you do see things in here which we're identifying that these are our comments. They were not vetted by, say, the general plan advisory committee or any other board. We're vetting them past you and we're interested in hearing your feedback on them.
Good, good. Now that's good, Stephen. Thanks. Gotcha. And your your plan sounds good. Yeah, thanks.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
You know, I reviewed this agenda and, you know, all the areas that you that we're going to go over where there's a staff recommendation. And I also went over again, the general plan again for my own edification. And and maybe there's something I missed, but was there supposed to be a way for me to understand where the changes are in the general plan?
So that's a great comment. I would generally summarize that this is almost like a repeal and replace document. So it's not like a red line track changes difference document. You'd have to view it as a brand new policy document, top to bottom. The red lines, if you were to try to track and see all the changes, it wouldn't so much, it wouldn't have been easy to follow. So really, this is an entirely new document with entirely new policies. A lot of policies have been dropped, a lot of maps and supportive exhibits have been dropped. We've raised those as discussion points tonight, trying to bring some of those things back in and to kind of make it more of a robust, complete document. So we're ready for adoption.
Well, that makes me feel better. I thought I was thought I was missing something, but I do review it as a new document. Okay, thanks a lot.
Great. And with that, I think we're, I'm not seeing any, unfortunately, my my views a little bit more limited with the PowerPoint up. So I can't always see when somebody has their their hand raised.
I think you're good, Stephen. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, um, and that kind of brings us to schedule. So like, how did we get here? So and why are we doing this on the timeline that we're we're doing it on? So overall, this the product schedule has been compressed to really achieve adoption of the general plan and the housing element prior to a January 15, 2023 certification deadline. So we're really targeting a, if you look here on the slide, the very last date, this is we're working backwards from this December 2023, or I'm sorry, this should be. Yeah, December 2022. So I'm sorry, the slides incorrect. We're targeting state council adoption of the housing element and general plan. Really, at the start of next year, we're working on launching the sequel process. And hey, to get us there between October and December, we need to really finalize those higher level items, floor ratio, land use mapping exercise and the like. So to to help us get there, tonight's meeting is focused purely on the general plan. We are going to, as I mentioned earlier, have a October joint PC city council study session, which is going to be an education opportunity on housing element requirements, then a dedicated housing element focused discussion. Then we're going to meet with the city council in November on the housing element. And then if time allows and depending on the feedback we which we receive from the planning commission tonight and the and this and the city council later this month, we might try to squeeze another meeting here in December or in November with the planning commission to kind of wrap up feedback and comments, which may be outstanding. But hopefully, if we can get enough consensus and we seem solid enough tonight to advance, we might just be able to go straight to council for at least the land use mapping and floor ratio. Granted, policy development will still have time on. And yeah, and one other broad point I wanted to mention is that there very well may be, we might have, we might identify policies in this general plan or new policies which we might need to have, which might require further and study and analysis. Because of the timetable, we're within a year, we can't really realistically hire another consultant to go do a study of some specific issue that any policies which require additional further study and analysis, we're going to need to defer those. It's okay. You can have a policy in your general plan that says that you will study or do something. That's kind of the purpose of it. But those that additional study and analysis won't be part of this general plan update. It would be following adoption. So I just kind of want to circle back. The planning commission has provided us a lot of feedback in the past about a lot of big, broad policy discussion topics. And these relate to our requested work plan items. So these are considered by the city council. It's part of the budget update, I think, is back in June, July. And on screen here, we're kind of summarizing that you have the planning commission raised floor ratio as an issue. They had requested that that the city council look at amending the zoning ordinance to allow an increase in floor ratio to help encourage redevelopment or development in certain areas. That's wasn't picked up as a work plan item this last year. So it would kind of remain as an open discussion point. So we can absolutely have, when we touch on the landy settlement and the floor area ratio conversation, policies which maybe are aimed to address that. Same goes for parking standards. The planning commission felt very strongly that that the standards may be too high and it's standards that should be developed which reflect the surrounding environment like proximity to light rail. Plankton also felt ADU amnesty was important and that we needed to develop a policy to legalize existing units without a penalty. That was picked up by the city council. That's an active work plan item. So I'm not so sure we will need to develop additional policy language to address it because it's already ongoing. And then there's a desire for joint meetings with the planning commission or with the city council, between the planning commission, city council for overturned overturned projects. So decisions that you felt as if you might have a little bit of disconnect on that once a year, there would be a check-in process. And then in Lufi, Plankton felt to there might be a desire to adjust or add to the cities in lieu or impact fees to help realize true impacts of projects. And lastly, affordable housing assistance. So there's a desire for a study session with the city council to encourage increased development of affordable housing. And that might be a good example, that last one there of something which we table for the housing discussion. But yeah, so all these are picked up. They're not necessarily all addressed in this draft in our plan. Because a lot of those came about, again, this is prepared back in October of last year. A lot of these comments you see here on the screen, those are brought forward as work plan items in the the budget update. So if you don't see something that you want in this general plan update, it would be now would be the time to raise them and have a certain policy direction fed in. So with that, I kind of want to bring us to our first of two major topics tonight, which is the preferred land use map. As you're kind of seeing here on the screen, it is a it the the land use map, what it really does is it serves as depicts the city's vision for how commercial, residential, open space and other uses will will occur in city limits. And it's as recommended by the city's general plan advisory committee. So broadly speaking, this map is remaining relatively status quo. There are six key changes you're kind of summarized here on the screen. The first is the Hamilton Avenue specific plan. So the the land use map calls for this area towards the towards Hamilton and 17 to be re to have its own specific plan that will dictate or call out specific land uses. The idea would be higher density, mixed use, land use designations. But it doesn't really go so far as identifying exactly what the mix will be or what specific site should be what. The rest of the areas of the land use map are a little bit more specific. So we have the Hamilton Avenue East corridor. We have two parcels, two two areas which we've picked up as being changed from general commercial to our CPO or residential commercial office. This is a mixed use land use designation, which hopefully take advantage of its proximity to light rail. The land use map also calls for a change of properties along the Bascom Avenue corridor on the east side, which about all the single family residential lots from general commercial to neighborhood commercial. So you have a broad boulevard here. Yeah, six lanes in some areas, three on it. It's large enough, you land 747 in some areas. But it's 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 large enough. I mean, it's a question of this commercial corridor. You're balancing either the needs of the residents and not put too intensive of activity up against these single family homes, but also recognizing its proximity to that that made major corridor there. The plan also calls for a similar change on the Camden and Winch. Uh, the plan also calls for a similar change on the Camden and Winchester, a segment of Camden and Winchester. So this little area pocket here is going from general commercial as well to neighborhood commercial. That would be a little bit of a lesser intensity commercial land use designation in general. And then lastly, uh, the south of Campbell Avenue area plan area, so this little pocket down here. Um, this is being changed from uh, sorry, I'm having to keep moving my window around. It's commercial medium to high density residential and it'd be changing to our CPO residential commercial professional office. These are, actually as part of the general plan update, the, we're proposing, it's being proposed to completely eliminate this land use designation. Seeing it as being redundant with the residential commercial professional office. Uh, designation entirely. So that's not really a major change. It, it doesn't really provide for allow any different uses than would already be allowed. And the densities would be remaining constant. It's just kind of like a flattening of the land uses. And I, I think I skipped. Dover a little bit earlier. I mentioned this little pocket here on Camden, but over here on Winchester, uh, this is across from the Dell Avenue. On the east side of the San Thomas area neighborhood planet at the limits of it, there's a proposal to do a similar change from um, general commercial. To neighborhood commercial again, in light, in all likelihood, recognizing that, that, that abutment to existing single family. Housing in those areas. So um, with that, uh, we really just have one major question for the planning commission on the land use map. And it could be a very simple discussion or very complicated one, depending on where we want to go with it. And it's uh, what other land use changes are warranted or do you even agree with the ones which are being proposed? So I don't want to. Um. Wait you too much either way. So uh, we're, this would be a stopping point where we were, we would need to circle back with each of the commissioners and hear your feedback. On uh, the preferred land use map as it stands today.
Even so, for neighborhood commercials, the F A R there is point four, if I remember right. Can you tell me kind of what are the major differences between the general commercial and the neighborhood commercial?
Yeah, I can say broadly, uh, I mean, you do have some distinctions between the development standards. They're both point four, for that matter, neighborhood commercial and general commercial the same. But certain activities which are more uh intensive, I'll give you an example, like theaters. Would not be allowed on a uh, in a neighborhood commercial area. So if you have a theater land use or certain, you want to have dog boarding facilities. It'd be another example just offhand. Those are prohibited land uses in the. Neighborhood commercial but permissible in the cent- in the general commercial.
So I. What about um? Um, drive through restaurants?
So uh, yeah, again, drive through restaurants would be an additional example, something that which would not be allowed in the neighborhood commercial land use designation.
So lower kind of intensity um traffic um group but uses.
Correct, but your standard uses like retail, personal service, office, medical offices would all be possible uses still in those areas. You'd be limiting those more intensive commercial activities.
Got it.
Stephen.
All right, I see um Andrew has his hand up here.
Show of multiple questions, but the boundaries that are represented by the changes that were just outlined, Stephen. Uh, what's the, what's the impetus for the boundary being, you know, two feet one direction or the other? I know that's a vague question. But how, how did we arrive at those final boundaries that are shown as the changes?
Well, I think for a lot of these pockets, they're picking up those areas of parcels, but they, they were changing pretty much all. I mean, these commercial pockets in particular. They're picking up all locations of a common land use designation. So these were all general commercial. And they were all fronting this Bascom Avenue area. So they went through a mapping exercise. Again, this is what a lot of those eighteen meetings, the general plan advisory committee were for. They went through multiple meetings about just the mapping exercise, exactly where and how they should be laying it out. This is as they've recommended. So um, I, I would say that if you're looking at just this one corridor here, it picks up all those kind of smaller. Individual um, commercial centers. It includes like even some of the larger ones like Habit Burger and that kind of stuff.
Sure.
Then it, it drops off um, a little bit further north in the map, like this would be the Whole Foods shopping center. So that's a larger, single, commercial shopping center up here. And again, I mean, that'd be, that's actually a question for the planning commission is i- if you agree with the limits which have been defined or feels if it should be moved a foot left or foot. North and foot east or south, this would be your opportunity to raise those. And again, this could even extend to the area plan boundaries to a limited extent as well.
That, that's where I was going with it. I didn't want to open the can of worms yet, but I, I have some thoughts on some of the boundaries. I, I feel like they're on the right direction. But they miss a few key elements, but I don't know if this is the opportunity to tell you my wish list, but I, I do have ideas that. Would help enhance some of those boundaries or in this areas within those boundaries.
Well, I, I will say broadly speaking, that is the point of tonight's meeting. We're, we are aiming to capture that feedback, your wish lists, and we're going to document it all. And that's why we're anticipating just between the land use map and the floor air ratio conversation, we could spend a, a, a large part of tonight's evening. Just trying to figure out what those boundary lines should be or how they might need to be reflected or other landings changes that might need to be um made.
I have a running list of questions, but I'll defer to the chair. Would now be an appropriate time or shall I wait till we're coalesced around questions?
Well, I think what we'll do um is, because I see um Commissioner Buckbinder um. And uh. And one other hand up. So um, I think if you want to go ahead and ask your questions, we'll probably spend like. About five minutes and then we'll just kind of continue to rotate through so that everyone has an opportunity to.
Okay, and I'm sure fellows will trigger other questions I have. Um, I hate to just be the first one to jump into this granularity, but um, with the Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay. I think that's a viable and valuable space. I'm glad the. I was, I did attend a few of the sessions, but not all. And I don't know that we actually discussed this area. But I feel like the entire area along Salamar that isn't already um residential, but that's shaded in blue, representative of industrial. I'm addressing this to staff. Uh, that continues the corridor and extension, of course. It will take time for developers or landowners to evolve that area. But I don't see why the boundary just stops at what I believe is the um, the self-storage area. Um, of course, I know our, our city has a shortage of self-storage, but that's not what I'm discussing here. I'm, I'm feeling that that is an entry point to Campbell that. Would benefit from the extension of that overlay zone. So that was one of the first L pieces I saw and, and feel like that could use revision. The um, the others make more sense because they're kind of contiguous with, like you mentioned, along Hamilton. I'm sorry, excuse me, Bascom. Uh, but my uh other area of um. Not contentions, not the word, but uh questions. Um. Relates to. I guess the south, is it um Winchester, the south area there? Is that um? Is that existing residential or those are already the commercial and light um industrial spaces?
Yeah, so I can, I can offer. So thi- this little segment here that in pink, that's been proposed. So it's currently general commercial and be changed. And if I may, I mean, this area up here that you were talking about just a moment ago, I could speak to that a little bit. I, again, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty why line limits were drawn at the way, the way that they are. But we do have the north of Campbell Avenue area plan, which does kind of share common boundaries with the areas which were drawn here. I believe it might stop one parcel short of what they're showing. But I mean, uh, obviously, we, we'd be, as a general plan update process, we even talk about area plan boundaries. If, if we feel as if. Redevelopment of this area should pay its fair share into potential improvements into this specific plan overlay area. I mean, that's a, that's a viable discussion point as well. So hopefully, I, I mean, so this is not existing single family residential. I think you do have one parcel, which is a. Non-conforming, single family homeless area, but it's, it's all zoned, general commercial right now.
I, I drive that corridor daily. So you're right. I now, you know, reflected some auto body shop, some um, a daycare, some um, reach, light retail. And some offices, so a, a Barracuda, for example. Um, but uh, yeah, that, that northern Hamilton zone to me. Needs a little bit of massaging. I, I feel like it could envelop a couple other adjacent parcels as you head east. Um, I know there's the avenue corridor element there, but I, I feel like that could use a little bit of refinement. And then um. I'm sure there's obviously endless here. Uh, and then I was, I was a little not shocked, but I was a little um. Taken back when I, I read through most of the report that the Dell area plan didn't receive any adjustment to. Preferred land use changes. Was that excluded for a certain reason? I mean, I know it already is light industrial research. If I'll check my notes here. Um.
Well, if I, yeah, I can hop in a little bit. Um, so this area of the city. Um, is currently CM controlled manufacturing designated. The general plan land use designation would not change. What the general plan does call for in that area, it's not a land use map change, but it is a change to the zoning designation to make it also. Uh, research and development designated. So it'd be changing, I'm sorry. It's a, it's research and development land use designation. And they'd be changing the zoning designation from controlled manufacturing to research and development. The material difference, the change of that, is that it provides the opportunity to create a bunch of new development standards is the idea. So we'd be kind of starting from the ground up. That's what the general plan is calling for. It does provide overarching uh policy direction. I was going to hopefully talk about on the next. In the floor area ratio discussion, but we are going to be potentially raising, increasing the floor area ratio of that, of that zoning designation from. I believe it's a, again, it's a lower point four to like one point oh and one point five. So there are planned changes in that area, but not through an area plan or specific plan overlay. So that's something that we raise the staff as a discussion point for the planning commission.
Alrighty.
I want to go back to that one, uh, chair person, um, Astrazki, but eh, okay, thank you for.
Yeah, definitely. I think um, Adam Bookbinder had his hand up and we'll kind of circle through folks and uh. I think we'll be able to get everyone's input that way.
Uh, okay, I'll go. Uh, thank you. Um, so a question, we seem to be, um, are we reducing commercial? Capacity generally. Um. I, I know that the far for general commercial and neighborhood commercial is currently the same. Um, I was initially a bit confused as to why um. You would have general commercial, neighborhood commercial um or, and then residential is sort of a um gradual. Um, may, means of forming a buffer when they have the same land use intensity, but I can understand um banning some uses there. Are, are we going to be losing commercial capacity by making this change?
I would say this, the change from general commercial to neighborhood commercial doesn't change, we're not changing the number of sites which could be. Commercially designated. I, I mean, we are changing some sites from general commercial to mixed use. And depending on how those new mixed use designations apply, those could, the sites could be exclusively developed as residential. But as far as um this change from. General commercial to neighborhood commercials primarily a, 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 and land use intensity change, you might not see as tall of buildings. You might not see the same types of uses like hotels and other activities which are a little bit more intensive in character. Uh, pop up in those areas as a result, but um, no, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really characterize it as such. From, from general commercial to neighborhood commercial per se. Where you would need to worry about that more so. Is areas like that Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay and this little speci- this Hamilton Avenue corridor change. Where you have these sites which are general commercial today and be changed to mixed use. And really what you want to see, this new mixed use land use designation change too. So I, and I'll, I'll even expand on that for a moment here. I mean, you have, let's say, the Fry's Electronics site here within the Hamilton Avenue specific plan area. If that becomes a mixed use site or mixed use designation, you might be losing some of your commercial presence in that area if it. If it's developed predominantly as, as a residential project. Tim goes for the uh, the Elephant Bar site across the street, which was uh. Entertaining and in and out there for a while.
Hmm. So uh, thank you. That, that explains some things. My um, my opinion on this is Bascom is going to be a giant six lane highway, one way or the other. Um, the fact that someone is living, you know, one parcel over from it. I think it makes more sense to keep the uses somewhat intense next to our giant six lane highway. And step down away from that as opposed to um. Trying to make it so that people live one parcel away from a six lane highway can feel like they don't live. One parcel away from the six lane highway. Um, I think it would make sense to um, keep that as general commercial. And maybe have uh mixed use or neighborhood commercial on some of the side streets. And um, like higher density residential stepping down. I realize that's not what people uh wanted there, but. That's what I would rather see there. Um. Additionally, our transportation plan, I really understand what you mean about all these parts being interconnected. Our transportation plan indicates that we want V T A to extend the light rail to Hacienda. I noticed that we're not doing anything with the area around Winchester Station. Um, currently, it's a parking lot and that's really not conducive to people using the station. So it would make sense if we want V T A to extend the light rail that we. Make it easier to develop around the light rail. And. A broader question, um, given that one of the other questions here is, do we want to set the planning horizon out to twenty fifteen instead of twenty forty? To what extent does this define our land use for the next twenty or thirty years?
Sorry, it took me a second there to unmute myself. Um, I mean, the, the general plan can be updated from time to time. And we will have general plan amendments throughout this process. I mean, at any given year, you'll see two, three general plan amendments where we can make it a site or multi-site land use change. Uh, bundling or otherwise, and we could, we can make amendments. It's not, you're, it's set in stone per se. It is a long-term visioning document, is going to make it easier for development consistent with the plan to be facilitated and, and to build per plan. Um. Absent uh, I, I mean, absent there being general plan amendments, I mean, it would be a twenty fifty visioning document. We're, we're anticipating. What is the city going to look like at twenty fifty? And have we prepared a document which is going to help us get there?
Okay, well, given that, um, like one of the things I've noticed is that when we're, when we're presented with a general plan amendment. Um, you know, people say, well, the city was planned or designed in this way, so you know, there should be a very high bar to change it. And I believe there's a. Sequel process involved in making a general, uh, general plan use ca- uh, use change sometimes. And it, it seems to be a pretty heavy duty process. Um, given, given that, um, I just, I, I look back to try and think of what thirty years in Campbell looks like. Uh, from nineteen sixty to nineteen ninety, the city tripled in size. And I don't think this. This land use map would let us do anything like that. I realize this is somewhat touching on housing element issues, so I'm not going to dig too deeply into this. But my, my concern is that. We are like, I, my, my sense is that this, these are, many of these are great changes. We're not making enough of them. And this is pretty much getting us to where we need to be now as opposed to where we need to be ten years from now, let alone twenty or thirty.
On this way in real fast, Commissioner Buckbinder, Robbie Steward, New Valen Director, to extend it relates to housing and residential growth. I would absolutely hold on to your sort of comments on that. There's going to be ample opportunity. We do have a re-allocation of three thousand units. We have to. Design capacity for. So to the extent, uh, of course, that's going to drive residential growth of the city. To design those spaces and allow housing to come in. So there will be opportunity ahead to, to, to come to that discussion.
Yeah, relating to that also, I would, I would suggest that this is in one of the listings, but it relates here. Um, I would suggest that we would come back and explicitly redo our land use. If we're going to have a plan for thirty years, I would suggest we come back and redo our land use map. To cycles from now, like sixteen years from now, as opposed to waiting the full thirty.
Thank you for that additional clarification, Director Eastwood, and thanks for your comments. Um, I think we had a. Vice Chair Stuart Ching had his hand up next. Uh, are you there, Stuart?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I'll, I'll keep it fairly short. Uh, I, I basically just want to say I agree with Commissioner Rivlin. Um, on the Salma Avenue um, and extending that down. Um, down Samos, Sam- Samo Avenue. Um. It, it seems to make sense, you know, where the fries is and, and basically taking that south and making it contiguous area. Um, to allow for the potential of um, a larger, especially mixed use residential area. Um, so that was one comment. And then the other one um is right down at the south, the Dell Avenue. Um, the, the bit which is in, in gray. Um, I really have more of a question or comment. Um, I think Stephen said the floor area ratio and that was being proposed as one. Um, I just wonder why that's, seems to be pretty low to me. Um, I don't know whether that's under. I don't know whether that's under utilizing that potential opportunity for more intensive development. You know, maybe more hi- higher buildings allows more open area and a more of a campus feel to the place than just trying to keep the, uh, the number of floors limited. So that's it. That's my comments.
Thanks, Stuart. I think the floor ratio is our second topic, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Righty, appreciate that. So I have my assistant director here who is pointing at the screen and she's pointing to Commissioner Craig, please.
I thank your assistant, Commissioner Ostrowski. Good job. Yeah, I'm going to, on this, on this round, I'm going to be quick too. And I think a couple of the things already came up. And it sounds to me like on the Dell Avenue, that, that's going to be an FAR question, but Stephen, so just terminology, so is R and D going to be the zone? Are we calling it R and D or are we going with CM? Cause I, I think R and D is a lot more user friendly.
Yeah, it's being renamed to research and development to, to, to match the general plan land use designation of research and development.
Okay, then I might, then specifically on the land use, so and Commissioner Rivlin brought these up too, but so on the Camden and Winchester Boulevard corridors, the NC zone. Does that allow for mixed use projects that include residential?
It, it does not. So it's exclusively, yeah, so if you want to have a, yeah.
Good. And then my final question for this round is, and I, I, by the way, I agree with Commissioners Rivlin and Ching on Salmar, definitely. And I like the fact that we got a separate zone for that part of Hamilton. But my question is on the, the rest, and I, I should note that the rest of Hamilton. Uh, you know, heading west, northwest there, uh, away from 17. Is that, is that part of a, of a specific plan or, or not?
It is not. So the, the closest area plan you have is the note north of Campbell Avenue area plan, which comes up this little segment of Salmar. You do have a Winchester Boulevard master plan extends full length, the full height here. All of the city limit line in the north, but there's nothing in these areas. You do have the Creekside. There's a Creekside policy language which applies to a segment of this area over here, but nothing's really touching.
I actually, my thoughts are moving the other direction, and I'm just wondering if with those, with the zones that we have there. Would those enable relatively large mixed use projects that would include residential? On that whole section of Hamilton, I don't know how far the city limit goes, the Lanner or wherever, but, um, I mean, not Lanner, but Santa Masequino.
I would offer that only those sites which are presently already, already zoned mixed use. Some of the, the, the city council recently provided some authorization to consider 700 West Hamilton, which happens to be this little red site here. That's the Culinary Arts Center building and Gold Gym to change in land use designation to a mixed use land use designation potentially. That's not picked up because that's, that's policy guidance which has been provided since the, this preferred land use map was prepared. Similarly, across the street, this Payless Shoes Center at one point had been granted authorization for similar pre-application to change its land use designation to a mixed use, but it's not picked up on this map at all.
It's kind of a mishmash. Okay, so it's kind of too bad, I think, because I guess my final question, I know housing is, is a separate topic, but with the, with the intensity of the, of the uses that we have in our land use map, did we ever back out and figure out? I, this is a stupid question, an impossible question maybe, but did we ever figure out how many residential units we could actually get with the zoning that we're proposing? Is that just something that's impossible to do?
No, I mean, we, we have that in our current housing element. We have to demonstrate our current regional housing needs allocation, how it's being satisfied. But I will say, I, I would table all the housing discussions. Or I'm sorry, I've got to talk.
I'm sorry, I just wanted, okay, thank you very much. I'm done.
Alrighty, Commissioners, this or, thank you for, uh, raising your hand.
Uh, yes, thanks. So I, I, I got a question about the overlay on Hamilton. It, it presently is general commercial. Does that mean, uh, is that what is intended to be is, is, is general commercial i- in the final map, or is that going to change?
No, so that's kind of a, that's a great question. So this area here, you're talking about this Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay, how it's currently shown as general commercial, that C2 red.
Right.
So, yeah, it's kind of an interesting mapping thing. I kind of had, it would have been nice if we had painted that some other bizarre colors. I mean, it doesn't presently exist because it's kind of te- to, to be determined. So it's what it, what this map is showing is its current land use designations. But it's just saying that anywhere in that hashed area, it's going to be something which we don't know what it's going to be yet, but it's to be studied.
Well, I would, I would vote for mixed use residential commercial in some way. Because I think being in the corridor that's near mass transit. That would make sense to me. That some of that would be a higher density residential with, with commercial in it, you know? So that would be my vote on, on all or some of that. Uh, the other question I had was on the difference between the neighborhood commercial and the residential commercial. So on, on Baskam, you know, below, below Hamilton Plaza, it's neighborhood commercial all the way down to wherever, to the end of the, to the end of the city limit, I guess. So, um, does that eliminate the ability to put in higher density, um, mixed use residential commercial? If it's, if it's neighborhood commercial?
Well, I wouldn't say, I mean, if it's currently general commercial, you're not eliminating the possibility because you cannot do residential or mixed use projects on either the neighborhood commercial nor the general commercial land use designation. The only sites which can support mixed use are going to be those, those mixed use land use designations.
Okay, so the residential commercial is the blue, the lighter blue. And that's like, uh, the cross the street on Hamilton, on, on Baskam, north of the Prun Yard, where you have that large residential complex, I forget the name of it.
Yeah, correct. So Bay West written now, now going, uh, Revere is an example and Onyx. Those projects, this whole segment here is mixed use and could support that.
So, but, but you're saying that across the street on the pink neighborhood commercial, you could, you could not do something, you could not do a high density.
Sorry, hold on one second, Commissioners, this or, um, sorry, Jeff Bradley, thank you. Your volume was coming through, thanks.
Okay.
Yes, so correct. So this, this segment, I, I'm hearing your question. On the right side of Baskin Avenue would be limited to C1 or like neighborhood commercial land use designations. On the opposing side of the street, that is calling for a residential, commercial, professional office land use designation. This area over here would be changed to mixed use, where you're budding higher density residential land use designations.
Okay, and, and I was, so the reasoning for that was because there's a big neighbor, residential neighborhood behind that, right? I mean, uh, that's probably thinking is they want to limit that in terms of height and density on, on the bass, on Baskam because of the, um, whatever you want to call it, the midway street neighborhood, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, they are placing lesser intensive neighborhood commercial uses of budding single family, lower density land use designations. Then on the opposing side of the street, they're proposing a, a change from general commercial to that mixed use land use designation. Where you're budding a higher density residential.
Okay, and the only other comment I have is I, I would reinforce the Salmar Avenue idea to tie in more of, uh, what, uh, you know, to the downtown, uh, you know, because you already have some residential area there. Near, you know, Harrison and Salmar. And so, uh, it seemed to me you'd want to extend that area to, uh, provide more capability there. So I, I would agree with the other commissioners on that. And that's all I have for the moment.
Alrighty, um, so Commissioner Cam Carr, you're up next.
Thank you very much. I enjoy and, uh, agree with almost everything our commissioners are saying, you know? If we need to intensify, then we need to be more serious about it and I've actually put down my thoughts, so I'm just going to go through it. When it comes to Reno numbers, 3,000 units, that's a lot. And that cannot, that shouldn't be concentrated in some areas. It should be spread throughout the city, I believe. And, um, areas that have easier highway or mass transit access should probably get a higher share because of exactly that, you know? They can get on the highway easier or get on the mass transit easier. So there should be a little bit more concentration there than uh, in the middle of the neighborhood where those things are not as easily accessible. The floor area ratio 1.0, I think that's too low as well. It feels low. I think we should be open to higher floor counts. And sometimes the advantage of that is when the floor, the, when the floors go up, the uh, the, uh, base for your building becomes smaller. So now you can have more open space and you can have more a greenery, if you will, simply because you're, you know, okay, we're going up. And so, uh, I just want to, one such area, you know, in the city that I think has kind of been overlooked that has easier highway access and, uh, you know, close to the, the transit corridors, if you will, is the southeast area of our city, the White Oaks neighborhood. The, uh, you know, the Reading and the Shelley, you know, avenues in those areas. I think there are opportunities there to intensify. You know, if the right development is proposed. I know one of, uh, I, I live in that area and that's why I noticed one of our neighbors that just developed the property, they could probably have fit eight units there, you know, but they opted for four because they just felt, you know, they, they didn't want to go for a drawn out process, you know? And so, um, you know, there was a, there goes an opportunity to have had four more, um, units, you know, for our city, but it just didn't work out, you know? And I think we should provide incentives where they wouldn't walk away from opportunities like that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to turn it over, back over to Commissioner Bookbinder.
I, I'm sorry to not mention this earlier, I just I thought of this. So looking at the land use descriptions of general commercial and neighborhood commercial and the idea that one should be a, a less intense sort of transition from a commercial neighborhood to a less commercial neighborhood. I think it might make better sense and also make more efficient use of land. If neighborhood commercial were a mixed use land designation, which required the first, that the first floor be commercial use and allowed for one or two stories of residential use above it. Similarly, um, like this is outside of this particular section. But I, I was thinking if we were to, uh, increase the allowable far for general commercial, we could have like a, a lower commercial far, but still the same, um, built form. It's just partly residential. I think that would, uh, really help make a transition from a, a more intense to a less intense use and also increase the amount of mixed use we have. And I think the places that it's, it's suggested are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And I think that's a, I think that would be a, a good change. Just wanted to suggest that.
Okay, thank you, um, everybody. The, um, I think those were a lot of really great comments. The one, um, area I, I did want to emphasize was, um, just having, um, higher density and really building up that Winchester Red Light Rail Station area. I think there's a lot of opportunity to do something there and also kind of invest and enhance that particular location. The other question I had, I think, um, uh, Director Eastwood, it looks like somebody has their hand up from the public. Is that just as a matter of meeting management? Is that something where we include public comments together with our comments or?
Well, it is a study session, I'm taking action. It's a Brown Act meeting. I'd advise sometime during tonight, you open it up for public comment. It's your, your choice. What, would you like to do that?
Okay, well, I think what we can do is wait until we're done with this particular topic before we move on to far and then open it up to the public at that point. And then again at the end.
I was just going to observe, I, I, you know, when we were getting ready for this, I was telling Stephen, God, maybe, you know, maybe they're not engaged. Maybe we're, it's going to be hard for them to get feedback. I was observing, uh, great feedback overall, really, really thoughtful. Seems to be a couple of things coming through here, and I just wanted to provide, um, positive feedback on everything we heard from you. So thanks.
Great, thank you. Is that, does that give you enough to go off of for the, uh, for the, the zoning map, Stephen?
It's a lot of great feedback, yeah, absolutely. I, I did pick up on one point, I think I just, I turned off my screen there for a moment. What I was doing is it's kind of working in the background. And I wanted to maybe share something which I think would might be informative to the planning commission. I, I heard a number of questions about the differences between the neighborhood and general commercial land use designation, because that is one of the most significant changes. And in hindsight now, I'm what kind of wishing I provided a little bit more upfront about what that means in terms of what land uses would or would not be allowed. And even I even spoke a little bit earlier when I was mentioning that hotels would not be allowed. So in the neighborhood commercial, that would be, so I actually have a, this is not codified, so keep that in mind. Uh, but it's a quick summary lookup table of all of the, so hopefully you guys are seeing an Excel sheet right now. So unfortunately, this is going to show all of the land use designations and their associated, um, uh, land use allow, allowable, so I mean, so green would be an allowable use. Look, such your structures are allowed in these, uh, residential land use designations. Really try to focus on just these two columns here, try to blackout, blur out everything else you're seeing here. So again, like adult daycare facilities would be something that would should not be allowed in the neighborhood commercial to C1 column. But it's a conditional use yellow in the C2. Is it, as you go down this use, this list, you see, okay, here we're getting another one, ambulance services. That's something which is prohibited in, in the neighborhood commercial, but it's a permissible use in this, in the, uh, general commercial. Right? So this is a quick lookup table. There's a lot of land uses, but I just kind of give you guys a quick flavor of what this means. Really kind of trying to show, highlight those which are a difference. So these which are red, so banquet facilities, uh, bed and breakfast ends, I think I'm reading that. Blueprinting shops, broadcast studios, these would not be allowable or permissible activities. So this is what we're really losing, we're losing caretaking, cat and board dogging facility, cat, cat, cat boarding, grooming facilities, that kind of stuff. So hopefully that, and I'll, I'll scroll down just real rapidly here. Um, I had this, I put this kind of a couple of years ago. I figured it was really quick, informative cheat sheet, which would help get to the point, uh, so you have equipment rental establishments. I don't want to dwell on it, but, um, just to kind of help highlight a point. Like hospitals, again, something that's conditional in C2, but not allowed in, in, in the neighborhood commercial and, and so forth. It's a pretty long, comprehensive table as you're seeing, so the use is going to go on. Hopefully that, that helps a little bit. We could, we could, um, I, I, I think that I, we, we are kind of capturing what the intent of the neighborhood commercial is, which is neighborhood serving uses that people would go to go grab something basic, something close like milk and eggs, but they're not driving to a regional shopping center or something way outside their area to get to.
Okay, that was very helpful. So it sounds like it's just, um, less intense and serving the neighborhood, less noise, less traffic, less impact.
Correct. And with that, I mean, unless I'm seeing any other comments regarding the land use mapping exercise, we could go ahead and move on to the.
Looks like Commissioner Rivlin has his hand up before we.
I, I knew, I would like one definition on the land use map and then we can move on or follow up. Mixed use, I heard it mentioned a few times. And maybe my mind is drawing a blank, which zone allows for mixed use or is that only under a PD?
So that's correct. As it, as it presently stands, the only zoning district which can allow for a mixed use land use designation is the PD Plan Development or CPD Condominium Plan Development, technically speaking. There is no, there is no, uh, mixed use zoning district. And that's actually something the staff with. There is no, there is no uh mixed use zoning district, that's actually something the staff we've identified as a policy question. A little bit later in today's, tonight's conversation in the land use element.
Great, remind me cuz I wanna dig in on that, I I think it might be a miss, but I'll I'll wait till we get to that section, thank you for the follow up. Thank you Chair for allowing me to speak.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and bring us over to the floor area ratio conversation. So um just big picture, what is floor, what is floor ratio, make sure we're all talking the same language here, it's also reflected as building intensity. Uh it's also referred as building intensity rather, and it's it's the floor to area ratio or FAR is the term. And it's, and it's the amount of buildable, built area relative to the net lot area. So this exhibit here in the top, this is actually the one that's included in the general plan itself, so it's showing a typical, prototypical lot. Say it's a ten thousand square foot lot, in this scenario, you could cover fifty percent of it with a point five floor area ratio. At one story, or you could stack it to two stories and it's still a point five FAR. Similarly, so going up now, if you had a one point oh floor area ratio, you in conceptually could cover the entire property. With a single story building, now setbacks might preclude that and force you to go higher, if you wanted to maximize your. Or realize your full floor area ratio potential, so setbacks could actually affect the property like what you're seeing here. Or even stacking at even higher resulting in a four story tall building. And it's kind of to illustrate again with that, I mean, this is kind of illustrating the kind of the similar concept. But it's how once a one story building would be a one hundred percent lot coverage, a two story building would be a fifty percent lot coverage. And a four story building would be a twenty five percent lot coverage if you allowed a one point oh floor area ratio. It's really just how you're addressing that mass and bulk on a lot, this does not speak to densities. So again, density is gonna be a whole separate conversation, we're having the housing element. You could have a building of, let's say, this this four story building here. Floor ratio can be very deceptive in terms of the number of units that you get get on a lot. Uh because you could have this exact same building mass, that same volume hold twice as many units if the units are smaller. You could imagine this could be four units, each one on its own floor, or this could be two units per floor or five units per floor, right? So floor, I just, I I don't wanna give the unit discussion, I I don't wanna open up a Pandora's box there cuz we will have a dedicated conversation on the housing element. I just wanted to kinda highlight what we're talking about here, we're talking about just the the physical, commercial and industrial floor area of a building. Um that said, we brought this up as a, as a, as a discussion point. Also in response to the planning commission's requested work plan item, the planning commission did provide prior feedback that um. They felt as if the convert, that the floor area ratio might be too slow in some areas. By relaxing it, we might be able to see some development or redevelopment and some of our potentially more blighted areas or areas of the community where we want to see redevelopment happen. Um and the reason why this is the the second primary discussion point tonight is it's critical to complete our environmental review process. Because it helps us anticipate uh build out for traffic, air quality and other parts of the environmental review document. So with that said, um it's important to understand where we're at today and what's really being proposed as part of this general plan update. So as you're kinda seeing reflected here in this table, you have um the professional office, the neighborhood commercial and this, and the general commercial. Zoning designations, they all have the same maximum floor area ratio of point four. Now it's kind of a little bit deceptive because there's a, there's an exception process which is very generous. It just effectively enables the decision making body, in this case, I think I just pulled out the planning mission, but conceivably the city council as well. Can increase the floor ratio for specific use at a specific location when it, when circumstances warrant an adjustment, so. Let's say if you did have that project on a corner lot and it was on Bascom and Hamilton, you felt as if it was appropriate. To have a two point oh floor ratio for a hotel, the current land use destination could, the current zoning and general plan could allow for that. But it's not really, it's not really addressed in this cap, right, so that's something to keep in mind. It it's a uh floor ratio goes a little, up a little bit in the downtown, it allows up to one point two five. So a good example of a project which is maxing that out recently is the Opus expansion in downtown. But you're starting to see that new building kinda going up behind um uh Willard Hicks, Opas and Moes. And um uh that's a, that's a, that's, I think there's a one point, that's a, that's approaching the one point five actually. On that particular project, I think. And uh yeah, so I mean, there's also additional findings that can be made to grant a warrant and adjustment, we can go up to one point five and say the downtown core. Uh controlled manufacturing's point four, again, again, you still have these uh these exceptions which can warrant an adjustment. None of the new research and development zoning designation, which would be replacing that existing controlled manufacturing. Uh the general plan is calling for up to a one point oh floor area ratio. But it also provides an exception that you could go up to one point five. When the applicant agrees to robust traffic, robust and measurable uh traffic uh reduction measures. Um what that means, uh it's not really clear, clear just yet in the, in the plan, but it's pretty much providing us guidance to develop that following adoption of the general plan. But providing, and that would be that, it would be, that'd be effectively our research and development area, like that Dell Avenue areas would be, what would be affected by that. And then it pretty much everywhere else in cities, again, point four, again, you're seeing the light industrials or or M one or light industrial designation, there's McGlinsey. Uh primarily Sunny Oaks areas like that, uh and then our public facilities are also point four. So um we compared ours to multiple cities, uh we actually included that in tonight's packet, I'm not gonna go over each city cuz I. In the, in the interest of time, but I chose Milpitas in particular because they actually had some of the most stark differences to ours. And what's also interesting was when we pulled the numbers for our report tonight, we were pulling them from their current municipal code. While back in, I think it was May of this year, they recently adopted a new general plan themselves. And they've made the following changes that you're seeing, so this is what another community very recently, very timely just did. Um to change their land use uh floor ratio uh maximums. So in their particular case, it's kind of striking to me is right off the bat is they're changing their neighborhood commercial or their their equivalent of RC one. From point three five to point seven five, so we're a little bit higher right now at point four, but they're going up to point seven five. But they're also not adjusting their general commercial to increase, so that they're more intensive from a floor area ratio perspective would be their neighborhood commercial. And then on the, the only other two changes they're really making is that they're increased, the the very high density residential mixed use land use designation, which you're seeing down here. Um they're, they're both, they're just kinda splitting it. So if you were to build an exclusively um non-residential project, you'd be capped at one point five. But if you were to do a mixed use project, you'd be allowed up to two point five. And then in their industrial park, they're going from point five to one point oh. And another interesting thing is they're introducing an entirely new zoning district or land use designation that doesn't presently exist. And this is what they're calling their business park R and D. And the idea behind this, I guess, is to attract that next uh, you know, Netflix, Google campus type environment, it's business parks. We're also talking about high intensity office buildings, which they haven't really defined yet locally, but also light, light manufacturing parks and light industrial, like light industrial uses. And lots of these integration of other uses, and this particular land use designation that they're calling for, uh they're gonna allow up to two point five floor ratio. So um again, I, we have a bunch of benchmarks, comparables to other cities, we're not hoping to answer the question of what should be the floor ratio for an individual. Site or land use at tonight's meeting, which actually kinda brings me to my next slide. Um we're hoping that the planning commission can help us as staff identify broad land use designations or locations in the community. Which may warrant a floor area ratio increase, so if you feel as if, you know what, the M one, the the uh all the R. All the single family designations fine, the the C ones fine, but you know, we might wanna look at the, and the C twos fine, but we know, we really wanna look at the. Uh the mixed use designation or the uh. The research and development designation, those are ones which we wanna focus on, or the, you know, what, we might wanna talk about allowing being a little bit more flexible floor area ratio for these pockets of the community. That would be a good conversation point, and then secondly, if there's any specific land uses or activities which could warrant focused review. An example that would be like a hotel, so we could actually do an in-depth study or analysis of of particular land uses which are called out, like hotels. Determine what is, what what does the hotel community want, what do these, uh what does the business community think? Could be supported, would would spur development of that type of activity or use in our community. And that kind of gets at this last point is, we could um. To an extent, we can revisit this, we can, you could direct us as staff to do a more in-depth uh survey or study. With our business community kind of conducting outreach to property owners, realtors, brokers, to solicit feedback, which we'd present at a future public hearing. We'd be asking them the question of, is is floor area ratio really, is it, is it an impediment to development and growth in our community? Is it the primary impediment to growth and development in our community, is there something else that we should be more concerned about, right? Is that the reason, is that the thing that's killing deals from happening, that that if it was just ten percent higher here or five percent higher there? That that a job or project might have happened that hasn't otherwise happened. So we could do some outreach and find out what our actual business partners and business community feel. Um where we should fall on floor ratio questions, but in order to kinda home and and focus that that survey. We're hoping to hear back from the planning mission, maybe that survey or those land use discussion change or floor area ratio changes. We're hoping to hear your feedback, so with that, um we're at our next break point for for questions and and comments.
Super, all right, thanks a lot, Stephen, um and before we go on to the planning commission, I do wanna open up the public hearing because um. Raj is patiently waiting with his hand up, and so Raj, I'd like to uh turn the floor over to you. Or maybe he's just never lowered his hand. All right, good, okay. Uh I see another hand up, Morali, uh I'll turn the floor over to you then.
Let me ask uh um Chair Strass, I'm just checking in on Corinne, if you're there and can allow the attendees to speak.
Corinne's on mute.
Hi, uh can you folks see him enough?
Yeah, okay.
Hey. Uh sorry, um I was not sure, I was given a chance and then suddenly I saw. So uh Delaria Plan, um I think a lot of it has been designated as industrial. So I think that's one thing I wanted to bring to you, notice, you know, it's hundred and ten acres that can easily accommodate a lot of uh. You know, housing as well as commercial stuff, and also if you look at this whole San Thomas neighborhood, there is no commercial location, the whole San Thomas neighborhood. Like, I live in the San Thomas neighborhood, if I need to go get anything, I go to Lausgatos or, you know, San Jose side of stuff, right? So I'm literally giving the sales tax, all of us in this neighborhood are giving the sales tax to either San Jose or Lausgatos. Uh also, um if we look at the Camden Avenue, on the Winchester Avenue, if we cannot have drive-in restaurants along such busy roads. I'm not sure where else we will be able to put in like, you know, driving restaurants, especially for people like me who have small kids, both of us working. You know, it's not possible always to have, you know, with the kids to go into restaurant, pick up something or sit or cook at home and stuff. So drive-through restaurants, you know, are a big factor in the part of our lives with small kids. Um especially, you know, when times that cranky, we we just can't get out of the car, right? So I want you to folks to, you know, look, if you can't put on busy streets, then where else will be put? Also, uh like if you see Hasi Industry, West Hasi Industry, there is a bus that goes through that road. Um which connects the VTA station on Winchester all the way to uh the West Valley College. And, you know, the properties along that road, more than seventy percent of the properties are designated R one term. And there are a few power properties, which are like half acre, both properties are more than half acre properties. You know, if if we are designate that, those, that kind of stuff, and we are not even going to change that as part of this plan. You know, those half acre lots are going to sit as like that, whereas instead maybe you can fit in like ten. Ten homes on each of those lots or more, right, these are old homes, I can see people, and these homes are in my neighborhood. People would like to, if there is a possibility, would like to, and I would like to, uh you know, thank uh. Buckback, Commissioner Buckbinder for bringing it out, like, you know, if it is not in the general plan right now, people will think, oh, this, we can't do anything in the neighborhood. So it actually um acts like a blocker to people who wants to come and change, you know, do development in the neighborhood. So I think instead of doing this partially every year, we can go and make amendments to general plan, we now have have the opportunity. To reshape a lot of neighborhood and accommodate for future plans, and I also agree with Commissioner Buckbinder, like. Whatever it is we are showing right now in the plan is, you know, it's not even sufficient for today, and we are planning for twenty fifty. Right, so I think we should honestly plan for twenty fifty, not like a, oh, we have to get this done with by the end of twenty twenty two, else we'll be in some kind of trouble. Right, I'm, come on, you guys are being responsible to do this, to plan for the future for my kids, right, my kids. So, so they will be my age at twenty fifty, so please, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and I I think we have Morali. With a hand up.
Hey everyone, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hey, thanks for the opportunity to speak up and in fact, great comments from everyone. I kind of liked a lot of comments and definitely we should look forward this as building or planning for our next generation, thirty years down the line, right? Um and I second Raj, actually you spoke just before me on need for commercial near San Thomas area. Uh in fact, as I said, like, we are paying sales tax to our neighboring uh cities, how can we improve that? Uh and definitely Dell um uh area, Dell Avenue as well as the Winchester Avenue, I think are great opportunities, we should look at that. Um and other thing I heard about this mixed use development, um and I think two concerns I have. Looks like we are not having an explicit zone called mixed use, rather it's getting club combined with commercial. Why don't we look at making it a specific uh land use zone uh for mixed use development? Um and also I heard one more comment saying that like even when we make it mixed use, uh someone could just build apartments there without any commercial. How can we make it objectively mixed use, how can we codify that it is a blend of residential, commercial. Um institutional stuff together, rather than someone coming and just making it a commercial or residential. And there are a lot of advantages of it, like um we can cut down on gas emissions, people can just walk to entertainment or shopping. Uh rather than driving to somewhere, right, so can we codify the mixed used uh developments? Um another thing I saw about the FAR being mentioned, but the lot area coverage is not mentioned. Um I think the lot coverage area is also an important objective factor, uh mainly because how much area are we gonna keep open, open space? Uh and I'm specifically interested in um asphalting the open areas. So we see huge parking lots asphalted, and those are not gonna be useful for percolation of rainwater. So how can we define uh the lot coverage area and also define specifically? Uh if if you have X number of parking lot uh uh slots, um can we go uh either. A parking structure or undergone parking or first floor parking? Yeah, and I think comment, some of the, one of the commission made is that on spreading out this mixed use developments rather than concentrating on few areas. Uh I think we should definitely look at that uh for both uh aligning it into the public transportation availability. Uh and also distributing the traffic. So those are the comments I have, I do have few comments on on the environmental aspects, but it looks like we are not covering that today. Maybe the next meeting I can come up with, or I'll send out my comments on the, thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time, both of you, to provide your insight um to the planning commission, these are very helpful comments. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission, Commissioner Sisir, would you like to start?
Yeah, like going back to the FAR, thank you, Chairperson, um so um. Going back to the FAR, um. The, one of the questions I have is, I mean, you know, I'm I'm trying to understand it up, it's. Um I think it's probably pretty simple, like, the the bigger the FAR, the the the, the bigger the building. Which means it usually goes up um and you you get more people, which means potentially more traffic. And or you get less parking, so um. I'm not opposed to uh higher fires in um certain kinds of mixed use and commercial. Uh stuff in certain areas, so uh I I actually think point four is pretty low for. You know, certain types of a commercial and mixed use uses, but one of the things I wanted to ask. Stephen is, do you have examples of some of the bigger developments that we've done recently and what their fires were, for example? The, the big residential one on Santa Mas Expressway and. Hamilton, the, the office buildings near the Hamilton and in the hotel near the Hamilton. Light rail, those kind of places, what those fires were.
I don't have it handy. I could probably research that even actively during this meeting and provide a response in a little bit. But what I would offer is that for the most part, our mixed use land use designations, the residential component is not presently counted. So if you were to build a new, let's say the Bay West project, use that as a different example. We have historically only been measuring the floor ratio of the non residential component as to not limit the residential from reaching its full dwell. Long unit per gross acre limit. And then, yeah, I'll do, I can do some research. If we want to pick a particular site or example, I could probably load an exhibit.
So you're saying, you're saying on the mixed use, we have retail at the bottom and then you have residential above, you only count the first four.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's interesting. And what about office buildings like eight by eight and the hotel? For example.
So those do are measured as the full project all the way up. What we don't count on those projects is the. Parking garage, so eight by eight was a great example. The parking garage was exempt and any area underground, like the underground parking is exempt. So eight by eight had a detached freestanding parking garage structure. Which is does not count against the floor ratio. But it's a very massive, large structure in its own right.
Okay. I, I'd be interested to know what the fires are. So we. Have a reference point in terms of what we feel like we can go up to, you know, like for something like that or for a hotel. I mean, I, I, you know, I was imagining the fries. The fries. Location as either, you know, possibly a hotel, right? So the question is, what, how big a hotel can you put on that? Property based on the size of the lot and whether or not that would be attractive for somebody. To put a hotel there or a mixed use, although it's too, it's awfully close to the freeway, but are are mixed use. Buildings. So that's the kind of thing is like, what does it take in terms of a fire to, you know, to get? You know, interest in, or does it matter? You know, it's like, is a, is a lower fire going to be okay? So I have more questions than I have answers. So that's all I have right now.
I can also offer real quickly that six seventy five and seventy five Creekside Way project. I wish I could share what I'm looking on my screen here. I'm hoping that I've got the floor area ratio of that project, but it's showing that it was. Hundred and seventy two thousand square foot office building on a, it's five stories tall, seventy seven feet height. Eighty six feet, if you include all the mechanical equipment. And let me see.
No, you can share your screen, Stephen, if you want.
Yeah, I'm actually, what you don't see is I've actually got multiple computers. So I've got depth upon depth. So I'm actually looking at another screen. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to revisit that one. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer handy. I thought it was on this right here. I tried to jump on it, but. Might have preempted myself there a little.
Seems like you're proposing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, me, me rolling. I've got two mice next to me, too. So I'm rolling the mouse on the wrong one.
All right. Thank you all. Pass the microphone over to Vice Chair Qing.
Thank you, Chair. Start me with some general comments on this. I, you know, what we're doing is a community is pushing for. Increased housing density, which brings increased population density. You know, within Campbell and immediate area, we have a limited amount of open space. And, you know, the quality of life is directly linked to, I think, open space, population density. So, you know, how does this? You know, how can you think about this for? The far, I think we need be thinking about increased far, an increased far. In some of these areas, especially next to public transport, Salma, Salma Avenue. Seventeen, Hamilton and the Dell Avenue, because I think. We, we could increase the far to have taller buildings. But in exchange for having open space areas. And, you know, you can, that's one way to have some green open area for the residents in those areas. I think it also requires something we'll be talking about a bit later is is parking. And we, we probably need be thinking about that, you know, there's an awful amount of space in this city given up to cars. And we are lucky that we have some public transport here. So. I, I think we should be thinking about increased far. Especially in the R and D area. I, I was, I thought it was a very interesting concept that Neil Peters had. With their business park stroke campus. And I know that's something that's. Happening in San Jose, where you have this type of community. We probably have limited area for that, but at the south, the Dell Avenue. R and D area is probably the biggest opportunity where we could have a campus and also include. Make that a mixed use, so put some residential there, turn that into a type of village. Where you're cutting down on transport because people could be living near where they're working. You could have some open area there as well. But you won't achieve that with the current far. I think we need be thinking about the far and increased far in that area. So, so my general comments, I welcome looking at increasing the far. In exchange for effectively trying to improve the quality of life by. Gaining back some area through. Open space and and cutting down the need for for cars. By having these type of campuses, business parks with residential in there. So maybe some general comments while the specific comments, but I think they probably read upon some of these land use areas. But thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Stuart. I wanted to just add to your comments. Personally, I also agree that we definitely do need to increase the bar and. And some sort of, you know, mixed use. Community development, as I think you were describing. And the other benefit to doing that in the Dell Avenue neighborhood, Dell Avenue area is that. You know, it is close to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. So, you know, whether it's. Residential. And people can then bike to other regions for work or to public transit, or whether it's. More of the R and D. Type setting and people can, whether it's light rail or bike along the Los Gatos Creek Trail to get there. I think there's just. Incredible opportunities for getting in and out of that area. And specifically, you know, as we look to the future and people's. You know, I would, I would expect that people's desire to drive. Is going to be reduced over time. We're going to be looking at. You know, self driving cars at some point, those probably will not look like cars. They'll probably look like little pods that. You know, will pick up people along the way and take. Them to where they need to go. I mean, it's going to look completely different than it looks now. And so I really do. Kind of urge us all to look at and and imagine what we want the. Our area to look like in the future in thirty years. How, how we as, you know, the Silicon Valley community are going to be innovating. And leading the world as, you know, companies like Apple and Tesla have done, right? Apple's done a fantastic job with their new circular campus, you know. Just creating an incredible opportunity, mixing open space with. You know, an ability to, to do laps around that and just completely thinking outside of the box, right? As they always do. So when I look at the map of that Dell Avenue area, it's just completely connected to. You know, seventeen and San Thomas and Winchester and eighty five and, and the. And the Los Gatos Creek Trail. And then, you know, getting back to what you said, Stuart, which is kind of that open space, right? The fact that there's all that water there. You have the open space, you have the nature with the birds and, you know, all of that. It's just. Something that I think we need to really. Take a look at and think creatively about. What we can do there.
I, I think it's, sorry, second comment. Have non car corridors, right? And you know, talking about e-mobility, e-bikes and everything else which is going to emerge. Reduce the dependence on cars. And I just want to pick up on the comment, I think it's Morelli who who mentioned it. About the San Thomas area, so mixed residential, again, to cut down commuting. So I know what it's like, it's really nice area. But you have to travel to go to the shops or to a bar or restaurant. So people tend to gravitate and that's a good thing to to the center of Campbell, but actually there's an opportunity there to maybe. Have another type of mini center of Campbell in some of the other areas connected by these type of. You know, there's corridors which we don't think about is has to be a car court, right? An alternative.
Yep. Yeah, I agree with that, too. You know, the Santa Moss area, we've been hearing more and more from. Community comments throughout the planning commission meetings. You know, the fact that folks are living differently than they had when the plan was originally drafted. So the, the, the need for having more access, for having more, the ability to develop. Is is coming through more and more. As things change over the decades. So Commissioner Camper. Like to open the floor to you.
Thank you so much. Actually, I think your words were golden, you know, I mean, you are absolutely right. If we're going to plan for the next thirty years. We have to imagine what the next thirty years would look like and be ready for that. So, you know, self driving cars, you know. I know five, six years ago, someone was. Talking to me about. He said in twenty years, thirty years, maybe forty years, maybe people won't have garages anymore, you know, they all. Subscribe to a rental car service, just like Uber or Lyft or. And they just pay a subscription, a monthly subscription. And they decide if they want it five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, you know. Wait time for the car to arrive from the. Time they designate and. It saves on the car payment, on the gas payment, on any tickets they might receive. Parking, you know, I mean, you can name it, the insurance fees they have to pay and. They were saying, and it makes so much sense is that. You know, we have to allow for the possibility of getting there, you know, in thirty years, you know, so I just wanted to acknowledge. You know, very true what you said. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Craig.
Thank you, Chair Straskey. Really great comments from everybody here, a lot, just a lot of food for thought. I really like that idea of incentives to increase the far. Incentives, including open space, but also energy conservation, water conservation, and all kinds of stuff that we can use. As incentives to increase the far. I do it, I do believe in general that the far should be increased, but you know, I'll point out that in in the staff report. Before Stephen's report here, this written report, Neil Peters definitely caught, did catch my eye. And and if you'll notice, it's also by far the highest of all the other cities, so. You know, there are, there are a lot of, there's always a lot of community input to something about the far, but but the one up. Things specifically on the questions asked by staff. You know, I kind of would like to, as, as everybody said here, we're talking about twenty fifty, oh my gosh, so many years out, but. I kind of do wonder what, you know, what works for developers in my mind. More mixed use projects with just a ground floor. Office or retail, because we know retail's changing, office is changing with the COVID, people working from home, so the needs are are less or more specific. But our housing needs, we know, we all know we have that. So I just wonder. You know, what kind of a fire and how it worked, how it pans out, how it pencils out these, these residential. Commercial mixed use projects. And I, you know, I kind of envision those. You know, mid rise. Four, five, you know, stories, six stories, even in those areas that we designated as the Camden and Winchester neighborhood areas. I'm looking at Hamilton Avenue West and also east of that central area. Dell, I don't know, I'll also just really quickly, because we did make a lot of comments on Dell and. And definitely that's an area where, you know, our, our general plan, we talk about. Giving a place for companies to expand. And that to me is the ideal place for that kind of a play. I kind of envisioned, I envisioned Dell. Despite its benefits for residential, I kind of envision it has, you know, more of the corporate headquarters type of areas, maybe corporate campus campuses. That would be fairly large and I don't know how that works with, with, with the residential mix in there. Maybe it does work, I don't know, but. But that's really kind of my thoughts, just, I just kind of thinking about the, the mixed use projects and how that might work to get more residential and still. Allow retail and and office development to pan out. Thank you.
Alrighty. Commissioner Bookbinder.
Thank you. So I have a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. So to begin with, from what I understand, far point four is. Very low for commercial use, basically get sort of a strip mall out of that, which we can see that. That's sort of the look you get along basket for a lot of it. This reminds me of that you hear that we're built out as a city, but we literally can't build on half of your average parcel. One of the questions I had was where does the point four number come from? Like, why point four?
Well, I'd have to defer to the wisdom of our predecessors who adopted the current general plan and its iteration. I, I would say that there is a, our general plan and and our zoning designations for that matter. Have a great deal of flexibility built into them. So the idea in large part was to provide. Almost near limitless discretionary authority to the decision making body to decide if and when. An increase in floor area ratio would be warranted. Now, I was trying to provide illustrative example of a recent project which was approved at a greater than. Or at one of those higher floor area ratio. Limits. And one that had come to mind was the, the Trojan self storage facility on McGlinsey. I believe it had gone to the planning commission recently for floor area ratio increase well in excess of. In that particular case, it was an M one zoning district, which would have otherwise limited that site to point four. And I believe it was ultimately approved at a one point two six. And I actually do have the exhibits. I'm not sure if they're the final version of plans, but I could share them if the planning commission would benefit from it. But. Again, just as an illustrative example, although you have point four, you also have this exception to the rule that allows you to increase it if and when. An adjustment may be warranted.
Thank you. That's, that's actually really helpful. I actually, the Trojan storage place is right down the road from where I live and I. When I go for even walks, I go over to it and I, because they're constructing it right now and it keeps on getting, you know, more concrete and it's very inspiring. So that actually moves me. The, the next thing I wanted to mention is that from talking to people. There are two specific factors which make it hard to build here. One of them is far and one of them is parking. The general factor that makes it hard to build here is how discretionary everything is. I, I remember it was mentioned that we had set the parking rules such that it was. Difficult to satisfy them so that the city would be able to bargain more easily with developers. Apart from that, I don't think that'll fly with HCD this year. This also. My understanding, there, there's a really great article by Henry Graeburn Slate about this, describing this thing called pretextual planning. And it is like, I understand that our predecessors really wanted to provide us a lot of discretion, but the downside of that. I think is that it really undermines the concept of the rule of law, because the rules aren't the rules, right? The rules are whatever you can bargain your way out of. And so. The idea would be that, you know, what we designed the city as here might have no. the idea would be that, you know, what we designed the city as here might have no relationship with what the city actually looks like. And people don't really like that for obvious reasons. And also it really makes it impossible to plan. So if we're we're wondering why we might be discouraging development, I think that's a really significant factor that we we use this pretextual planning in a lot of places. I I did some some research and the city of Boulder actually has minimum and maximum far's by um by zoning district. And what they do is you have sort of a base far and you can do things to bump it up. So um you know, maybe if we had people bride a roof deck or a green roof or architectural ornamentations, or they paid into a park or tree fund, or they hit some kind of energy efficiency standard or something like that, they would have a a far bonus. The the ideal thing here would be that it would be predictable ahead of time. Um having and also just in favor of raising the far besides that in practice, that's what we actually do for our for our community. I I know from, like, I've talked to some members of the community um and heard from the downtown people that commercial real estate is really expensive because there's not enough of it. And a very easy way to make it so that there's more available commercial real estate is to increase the available far for for that kind of use.
Um so Stephen, for the feedback and, you know, maybe this is a question for the director, I think those are good comments. Is that um how much uh should we be elaborating on that here, or is that a general guidance sufficient for you to kind of understand that I think we're saying more far is uh preferred to spur development and meet our housing numbers, but we also want to do that while you know, making sure we're providing benefit to the community in terms of open space, in terms of the environment, um in terms of quality of life.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I have some more specific suggestions in there, but but go ahead.
No, I was just saying, Chair Stravsky, I think the the feedback you're providing, the the level of detail is fine. And as you've seen, we've sort of staff caught this a little late in the process um and really quickly went out, just tried to find industry standard. Uh A, recognize do we have a problem? B, you know, what are some points that we could aim to? And and three, what are some more data points that we could look after, be it surveying the communities and or or surveying our customers. But I think um a lot of the concepts that I've heard here, one, hearing a theme that FAR needs to go up, which which echoes what I've heard from the staff. Two, I'll just say, I, you know, some of the comments I'm hearing from the commissioners are the comments observations I immediately observed upon starting here is that everything is discretionary and gray. I'll just, my personal observation, the PD zoning is is way overused in Campbell. So it it basically gets in the way of planning. Uh where where the state is going with housing is to make clear where to zone for housing, have objective standards. You know, to uh have standards, how you want it to look, have folks come in and build the housing. I'd say the same with economic development. We've heard from our city council and some others that we make the process too hard. So define what types of industries you want, define the standards that are make it easy for folks to go through the process. I'm hoping at the end of this, uh, once we get some good direction through the housing element, general plan, we're gonna do some major code updates. And the focus I would like to be is to make clear standards and push down uh decision-making authority, um so folks uh can get through the process a bit easier. So elaborating a bit on some of those comments, but to answer your question, Chair Stravsky, the level of detail on the comments we're getting uh perfectly fine.
And I I if I may, I I'll expand on that just a little bit. Um so we do have a critical project milestone that's coming up, which is the the start of the environmental review process. And what's critical for that is for us to understand maximum floor area ratios. So we could have very, we could very well have a number of policies that could have lower floor ratios as a baseline, say a minimum. But what we need to study is part of the environmental um impact report is those maximums, right? So we could have a bunch of
Basically, they're gonna do all the sequoia review based on the maximum. Is that what you're saying?
Conceptually, yes. I I mean, there there might be some balancing of that. I don't know to what extent or how if we had policy language that said that it shall be point four, except if you provide a pocket park or you do X, X, and Y, and we have a like a a la carte menu of items which could warrant or grant increases in floor area ratio for public benefit or otherwise. I don't know how our environmental side would do that. I think we'd just be conservative and just assume the 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 highest and maximum floor area ratios. But for purposes of our discussion, we will continue to have opportunities to have policy refinement. But for us to get to this um this critical December meeting date and be to do a handoff to our environmental review team, we do need to be at least focusing, trying to zero in on those highest floor area ratios for specific uses or locations in our city which would need to be studied as to the impact that those would have. We can continue to refine. So I I again, I think it's all great feedback. Uh as staff, I would be taking those directions. We should be evaluating some other communities that may or like Boulder, Colorado, that has um minimum maximum floor ratios and how they approach that, cities which have a la carte menu items uh of of ways and reasons you might be granting a floor area ratio ratio increase. We'd even solicit feedback from that from our uh development community. When do you think that a floor area ratio should be increased? It's kind of a, they could say, well, we should be getting it maximum all the time, but um it would be might 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 be interesting feedback, whi- which we could get more well-rounded uh uh feedback that way as well. So again, we're just trying to identify the the overall picture right now. Those sites, those land uses, those those activities which we which may be warranting floor area issue increases. And how much are we really talking about? So we can, we can at least kind of gauge it in some way on the maximum end of the spectrum. Hopefully that helps.
Okay, great. Yeah, so let me um
I
weigh in with some comments on the on the maximum from my perspective. I think it was very helpful to see what Milpitas um has come in with in terms of their maximum. I will also make the comment that, you know, they do have the fart station in Milpitas, so it is a pretty large transit hub, which I don't think we are quite there yet in Campbell in terms of public transit.
Um, may I?
Go ahead, Adam.
Okay, don't worry. I just had a couple more, couple more notes. So um I agree, I like Milpitas' approach considerably better. Um I remember just for benchmarks for what far should be, um if anybody's read Edge City, um the idea is that at about one point O, uh you stop being able to manage to be car-first. At one point five, that's about as much as you can get before people, before traffic becomes unbearable if you don't have another method of transportation. About two point O gets you economically feasible light rail. And about five point O is what a traditional old-school downtown looks like. Uh as a note, uh I realize this is not signed into law, but SB four seventy-eight passed both the Senate and Assembly and is currently awaiting the governor's signature. And it would make it so that any multifamily residential zoning had um had to have a minimum far of one point five. And it seems a bit silly to keep our commercial far below that. The note I had about R C P O zone um for mixed-use far of one point twenty-five, um I tried to figure out exactly how you could have, you know, a floor of commercial with residential above that, but um I believe Planner Rose told us that that doesn't count towards the far there, uh which is way better. I would encourage us to like definitely have a a higher far for commercial uses. Um and I I think what we have set up as neighborhood commercial would honestly do better to be much more like R C P O, but with required um commercial on the first floor. Um I think we should ask what hotel builders need and what tech campus builders need. Um I remember we had a campus builder uh trying to build something in uh the Dell Avenue area. I think that got turned down by Planning Commission. They appealed to city council and it got approved. I think that uh it might be useful to, I don't know if this is off-topic here, but uh to get low-intensity corner stores in residential areas, quiet time hours, restricted uses, et cetera. And later on, I just want to say I agree with Commissioner Ching's car-free corridor section. I'd like to come back to that later on. And I have some thoughts about Commissioner Camper's section about uh comment about needing less parking in the future. Um but those are my thoughts on far.
Anybody else have anything to add? Uh Commissioner Rivon.
Thank you. Um I'll try not to soapbox too much, but this is very refreshing. I'm glad we're expressing our desires for Campbell in our long-term goals. You know, so many of our planning commissions look at individual hyper-local sites. Then we we lose sight of what what can become. And I think that I've talked about it many times on the commission here, but that Dell area plan is kind of where the future, excuse me, the future of our city can go because it has potential to both increase the R and D. But I I I want to raise some other anecdotes. I heard a lot of um good feedback. Thank you, Commissioner Bookbinder and fellow commissioners. I, when you look at what Google's doing in downtown San Jose, or even in some of their existing campuses, they're they're not isolating the commercial uh to a campus or university-type campus. They're bringing some of their future campuses will have housing within them. So I think it would be very short-sighted to say that the Dell area or any of these districts would would not have um a component that's either mixed or adjacencies of of residential. So I think we really need to hone in on that in those land use map studies. But then the FAR can be appropriately matched to allow. And then that, uh, this is my last thought, Chair, is that we repeatedly visit the FAR on housing, commercial, industrial. It's always, well, you can exceed it, but let's all discuss amongst ourselves why we should exceed it. And it, we're generally, we find consensus, but it really is the feeling of the day. Now, you know, uh, this is a great commission. We all work together. I don't find any contention, but we we've, that one site may or may not go a certain way, but one way to tell developers that Campbell's a place to invest, one way to focus efforts into certain areas is to say our FAR is at a at a higher level. Uh I like what Milpitas is doing, maybe not throughout our entire city, but in certain focused areas. So where we looked at those uh overlay zones, including the Hamilton Avenue specific plan, and I'll repeat the Dell area, which I know isn't on this map, and the the Dell area plan was not approved six years ago, but those are areas where we could bring development in by increasing that FAR in those specific zones. So almost like an advertising, like a real estate sign. Come here because we are open to business to develop here. And so much and so many developers say, oh, you know, I don't want to waste three hundred, four hundred grand on design documents and planning to to only get told no, you didn't, you know, you're one story too tall, or um, you know. Of course, the sequoia, notwithstanding, obviously, that would need to be approved. But the FAR is this barrier that we're limiting ourselves in, and we can bring all those, you know, new investments to Campbell in specific uh spaces that are, you know, viable. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Looks like we had a great discussion on FAR with a lot of um input and consensus in terms of raising the FAR. Um are there any other topics related to FAR, Stephen, before we move on to the other items?
No, there are not. Uh we we, I think we touched on each of these major discussion points is if if we were to be identifying any broad land use designations uh or locations warning floor area increases, excuse me, specific land uses or activities which warrant more of a focused review, which is hotels, that type of thing. And then um if we're uh generally speaking, accepting of this idea of reaching out and who should we be reaching out to? Maybe it's other communities, maybe it's this development community, which is being suggested about a slide for us to conduct a survey. So if we wanted to receive that direction um on any of those items, that's where we're we're leaving off. But pretty much after this, we're we're gonna, we're suggesting doing an intermission, a a break, as it were. But we're not hearing any more comments on this.
All right. So what are you thinking, like a five-minute break?
That'd be our recommendation.
All right.
Perhaps some food or a drink.
Eight thirty, so we'll come back at eight thirty-nine then.
You take a five-minute uh nap, Maggie?
Yeah, go for it. Thanks, everybody.
All right, cue the intermission music.
All right, looks like it's eight forty. We're missing a few people. Their naps must be going a little long. Alrighty. Alrighty, I'm assuming we have Rivlin, Ching, and excellent. All right, Stephen, take it away.
Alrighty. So I'm kind of going back to our our slide from a few back about meeting management. We didn't really know where we'd be at this point. We didn't know how if this would have been ten or eight. We're actually pretty good on time, I think.
It looks like you thought it was gonna be twelve fifty five.
Right. At least a little thumbnail graphic though, so. So what I want to say broadly speaking is that before we really embarked on these policy checks, we just wanted to check on the timing. I mean, again, we have this plan. We're gonna tackle these five. I'd like to just go ahead and just dive right into them. I it was later in the evening, I might say, we might just start to say what are the key issues we want to, before you do a one by one, item by item, but I think we actually have time for that. So the thumbs up of the group, I think that's what we should dive into.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, and with that, we're just gonna talk big picture overall. So really, now that you've dug into this this administrative draft of the general plan. I mean, we've looked at the land use map a little bit. We've talked about the floor ratios, but really, this is the this is the core of it. This is all the policy sets, this all that other stuff that we've seen. And it's kind of coming down to it, this document, the general plan, it's it's supposed to be accessible to public, the planning commission, decision makers. You should be to pick it up, feel comfortable with it, open it up, find the answers you're looking for. It's giving you the policy direction you're after. And just keeping that in mind, we're kind of interested in hearing your feedback and overall legibility of the document. But also, we had touched on the report, these other key overarching discussion points. The first of which was this horizon. So the current general plan is it's anticipating the city at the year twenty forty. The reason why a staff, we raised this whole discussion point is, is that still appropriate? Is because this has been a five-year ongoing now general plan update process, right? So we've been working on this for several years. And as a result, the 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 time has slid a little bit. So if, I mean, if we had assumed that we were gonna get the the general plan done in like two years, that would have been a you know, a policy document which would have been longer than what it will be now. And so we were saying, okay, should we then be extending it for the number of years that this update's been ongoing? And what would be the next logical stopping point? And the staff were suggesting, hey, you know, we're maybe twenty fifty might be a little bit far out, but if we were to go further out, the next logical stopping point might be to try to coincide with the timing of the regional transportation plan, which is Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. Now, based on the commentary I've been hearing tonight from the planning commission, we're we're not so confident that the plan is there yet. We might feel different once we've done the housing element update, which is gonna be a separate conversation. You're gonna see a lot more color codes changing on the map. But right now, I guess the question's focused on the commercial, the industrial, those changes. Do we feel as if this plan and the policies within it are ready and anticipating to get the city ready for what twenty forty or twenty fifty would be? That's the that's kind of the key question that we're asking. And then secondly, you know, I'm actually gonna stop on each point. I think that might be best. So I'm gonna pause there. I'm gonna get, we're gonna do like a little straw poll, get feedback on that, and then we'll then we'll continue to advance.
Okay, let me, if you guys don't mind, just weigh in here first, since I'm always very patient and as the as the chair, I usually allow everyone to comment. But so Stephen, I would, I would say this is really more ready for twenty forty than twenty fifty. I think if we were gonna push it out to twenty fifty, then I would like to see kind of an external consultant really take a deep dive and present what you know, kind of external bodies think that things are gonna look like and and how they're gonna change between twenty forty and twenty fifty. Because I think that's quite a bit further out. And in terms of, you know, technology development and adoption and and regulation that's gonna support adoption of new technology, that to me, in terms of time, is is a significant difference. So I wouldn't want it to just be designed like, oh, let's encompass this for ten more years without doing kind of more investigation on what that would look like.
Yeah, and if I if I may, real quickly, just in terms of time and meeting management, we're gonna have if we go side by side, point by point like this, it will be a long meeting. So I just wanted to mention broadly, we don't have to dig in super deep on each point. Maybe what the chair, I mean, that is kind of consistent with what we've been hearing the other commissioner saying tonight, but maybe what we do is we just do a show of hands or use the use the the hands up feature if you are in agreement. And if not, we would have those people who need a little bit more feedback comment further.
Yeah, that sounds good. So I guess we can do a show of hands on who believes that this document should go to twenty forty.
I'd actually split it in half. Do twenty forty five.
I would agree with Commissioners Zisser and say that it it should, we should redo the land use element specifically halfway through.
Well, it looks like you have five votes for twenty forty and two for twenty forty five.
All right, sounds good. I think with that, we can we can continue to move on. We're not, I mean, we are taking, these aren't formal decisions. These are just feedbacks. I just want to remind the commission of that. It does help us just informing, just conveying what some of the feedback we've gotten to the city council had been from the planning commission, just in advancing. Next, just being goals, policies and actions. This is kind of really talking about the format and structure of this whole document at large. So big picture, you have a goal, let's say it's to I don't know, achieve more commercial redevelopment in an area. And then you have a you have policies that help you get there. And then you have actions which are actually how we're gonna implement it and how we're actually going to achieve it. So the way that this general plan is set up is that you have the 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 goal first, you have a slew of policies. And then you have a slew of actions, and the actions don't directly relate or fall underneath the policies. It's not always clear how how a particular policy is being achieved by an action. And we just wanted to get your feedback on the planning commission on that. If we felt as if the staff recommendation was appropriate or not, maybe that would be the the show of hands.
Okay, so if you agree with the staff recommendation, raise your hand then. Four, five, six. Six.
I I might raise my hand. What what's the alternative?
Well, I suppose the alternative is as it's currently presented in the plan, which is where you have the bulk of the policies all separate. You have the policies all together and you have the actions all together. So it's it's somewhat cleaner to read. If you're looking for just all the actions and implementing elements of this, you'd be jumping down to the bottom. We don't see directly how it relates. Our current general plan, if I if I can offer that, is set up the way that staff is recommending, that we we have the actions immediately following the policies which they serve.
Would this affect the minimum code or or that?
It would not.
Okay, okay.
It's purely a policy document thing, just for legibility and readability thing. This is a very high level discussion point. Either way, it's not gonna material change on the outcome of the document.
I read the question wrong and came up and noticed there were some actions that seemed to contradict each other. I assume I should say that for a different part.
Well, I'd like to say that the two points might relate to one another because it's actually harder to track those differences the way it's set up right now. You might have some actions which might not seemingly relate to a policy or could be contrarian to the the policies which, when you read them as a bulk, they serve. So yeah, I I we can we can tackle that maybe separately. I mean, we will dive into each individual element. So if you found or identified a policy much might read inconsistently, let's tackle that when we hit that element.
Okay.
Okay, I think I've got enough direction on that one. So we're we'll we'll try to move forward with placing them directly under.
Great.
Okay, so three more on this page. So the first is, and a lot of these are, we were just saying, again, we don't need to dwell on them too much. Maybe we take these three altogether in terms of emotion here. And we we enable those commissioners who want to talk about a particular point in greater detail. But the first is references. So the general plan includes all these specific references, SBs, ABs and the like. The problem is those do change change from time to time. So rather than trying to speak so specific to the bill number, we would more broadly state what they're achieving and and our way of of going about that. The document isn't immediately out of date as soon as we've adopted it. Second, this is kind of a commission, this is kind of a comment which we had heard was that there is a concern that there may be some political bias or fairness issues in in some of these policy goals, policies and actions of general plan that may need to be amended. So the idea here was, as you were reading the document, maybe again, we'll tackle that as we get into individual elements. If you identified any that you felt might need some wordsmithing to to try to address that, that might be helpful to help identify. And then lastly, maps and graphics. Again, we're speaking about the document overall here. Did we feel as if the the graph, the the document was well supported? Was it clear what those policies were achieving or to what areas of the city we were talking about? Or should we be supporting this document with more graphics and maps throughout? So let's go back to the first one.
So hey, I, Rob Eastwood, Director, some of these are pretty straightforward. I might offer to Stephen and Chair Straussky, we might do the opposite. So if if commission has thoughts to the otherwise, go ahead and raise your hand. Might be speaking now for everyone a piece. Otherwise, we could just keep moving through the slides and wouldn't have to have the commission keep raising their hand on each every item. We really might run into some time management issues.
Yeah, I agree. I was trying to think of the best way to manage that.
Will the consultant be providing these imagery or that's from staff to provide?
A combination. So I I imagine some of the graphics will be supporting the document within. We've already identified some which we need. But we are budgeted for an update of our general plan, which will include supporting graphics and and materials. We included in the contract as well a requirement that we could redesign the document as well to try to make it modernized or what have you, make it look a little bit prettier as a document. That would probably include incorporation of additional graphics. But really, I mean, some things, if they need to be custom, they're not like off the shelf answers. We couldn't impose on our our consultant a requirement to draw us new graphics from scratch. I think that would be outside of scope.
My my commentary would be as long as they're uniform in style and not like a hodgepodge of of ancient, you know, Campbell maps and then a brand new Google Earth map. And then I noticed on numerous pages, it says this image will be updated. I hope there's a way to flag that so they do get updated and we don't have random photos stuck in our, you know, memorialized general plan.
We will make sure we address that.
Yeah, say things like project photo, like the photographs throughout it. I mean, those could easily be updated, but and and our GIS maps will all be relatively consistently prepared, same level of quality. So we'll probably be incorporating a lot of those updated exhibits that way as well. We're not gonna be, if we have an old bicycle and pedestrian map from our old current general plan, we're not gonna be taking that existing one and just deleting off the the land use element number on it and just shoving it to the new general plan. We'll be updating those.
If I can jump in here, so the the only thing I wanted to mention it in terms of three, I I noted three areas of what struck me as bias. So in the first case, I realize this this is more to do with the housing element, but there's sort of a decision implicitly being made about whether housing should be more or less expensive in the more direction. Do we want to become a more or less expensive slash affordable city? And I feel like there's a bias towards homeowners over renters. Similarly, we don't really mention whether we want to have more or fewer homeless people. And it kind of implicitly comes down to we're going to have more homeless people. I realize this may be more for the housing element. And lastly, we have sort of, I I feel like there's a, I sense a bias for cars over other uses. Conveniences for drivers like free parking are explicitly defended. Safety for other modes is sort of vaguely hand waved that. I I noticed that any kind of consideration for bikes and pedestrians tends to take the form of adding public art, nicer sidewalks, stuff like that, but at no point does it inconvenience people in cars. I realize I'm being kind of blunt here, but I'm trying to be direct. Oh, and one other thing, the phrase neighborhood character is used a lot through the document. And neighborhood character is frequently used as a dog whistle, and it also doesn't like specifically mean anything. If you say neighborhood character, you might be meaning only people who look like me live here, or the buildings are all small, or cars don't generally come through here. Or, you know, there's a lot of trees. It can mean a lot of different things. And I feel like we should just say those things instead of saying neighborhood character.
I agree with that. That was kind of my sentiment. And when I was reading it too, especially in light of our conversations around having more objective standards and definitions, I felt that neighborhood character seemed like it was a little bit of antiquated language.
Okay. Yeah, I actually also agree with that. I think the neighborhood character thing is I'm speculating, but there's a strong, you know, the the Santa Mas area is a big, big area that where that that is essentially based on their area plan. It's about the the neighborhood being, you know, we're all having a rural feel and all that kind of thing. And so I think it partially comes from the Santa Mas part of this. And you know, I have some issues with the Santa Mas thing, but in general, but I won't go into that. But so I I I agree. I think we probably need to find or eliminate some of those kinds of subjective terminology.
Okay, all great feedback. Anybody else have any other comments on this particular slide with these three points raised?
Looking good. Thanks, Stephen.
All right, seeing none, and move us on. So this is actually the probably most exciting and interesting one for the planning commission. I'll I'll be honest, and it's the bland use element. So right off the bat, we're asking about mixed use zoning, whether or not the the city should, the general plan should establish mixed zone, mixed use zoning districts and establish policies aimed at reducing the city's reliance on the PD and CPD designations. And the staff, we're highly, we're very strongly recommending of this. The PD presents all kinds of problems for our community, the way it's implemented and used. It's been honestly abused historically, and so we're very strongly in support of that. And that's really the only question on the slide. So unless somebody has some, is in disagreement of it, wish to add more to that.
I think we talked a lot about this, and unless anyone disagrees, we should agree and move on.
Vehemently agree, and I believe that mixed use should be extended to many areas across the city.
I I would only want to add that are, would we be changing currently PD zone places back to some form of standard zoning? And would we be trying to change the zoning to what actually exists as built?
I would, that's a two, it's a two-part question, and I would respond that we would be trying to redesignate those currently, those properties to the extent feasible, back to a comparable zoning district. You would be creating a multiplicity of non-conformities potentially. You would be creating a, a multiplicity of non-conformities potentially to be creating grandfathered, um, I'll put it like this, uh, potentially grandfathered uses and grandfathered uh, developments. So the buildings themselves might not currently comply with the standards, but they could be modified in a manner that would conform with the new standards, which would be objective and enforceable and consistent with any other comparable development. So just to use a singular example, say you had a uh, a neighborhood commercial, a property is own plan development, but it's a commercial land use designation. You want to change it over to neighborhood commercial. But the building was originally in the PD allowed it as your setback or something greater than what would otherwise have been allowed, would now be limited to the, the, the floor ratio and setbacks of the zoning district for moving it into the C1. Now, there might be limited exceptions to the rule. There are some communities very limited, which actually had established their own planned unit development standards, which is art. So I'll clarify, it's not our entire, it's not our intention to completely eliminate the PD, but what, what we want to do is we want to restore it back to its original intended purpose, which is to facilitate planned unit developments. So developer in, in theory would come forward with a proposal with uh, hey, I want to build, let's say the, the Mozart subdivision recently. Uh, Works and Homes, a major developer could come forward and say, I've got 60 units planned. I want to have my own development standards, my own design guidelines, my own whatever, and they could subject, they could subject themselves to discretionary process to establish that first, and then have the project coming, which is conforming with it. And that would be really the intended use of the planning and development district. As it's currently used, people are just coming and saying, I don't like the development standards or they can't, I cannot build a project at all without rezoning it because it's, you know, in order to get a private street down there or whatever else, there's some limiting factor which almost mandates the PD zoning. So it's our intention to almost revisit those development standards, again, part of our objective standards update, to make it so you can build mixed use in a mixed use, use zoning district and make it so you can build small lot, single family development in appropriately designated zoning districts as well. So that's really the mixed use, that's really the, the heart of this conversation, this question. We're trying to resolve those longstanding issues which we've identified and seen, hopefully as a community over the years, where, where it, it hasn't resulted in less predictable land use development and, and less real planning. And so we're trying to rein that in to the extent feasible. But yeah, there might be a couple of limited instances where we can't, and we'll identify what those are and hopefully why as part of this process.
That sounds awesome. I'm really glad we're doing that. That totally answers my question. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate the kind of um, creative mixed use zoning, Stephen. So what I mean by that is, you know, for example, if we're talking about Dell Avenue, you know, we could have a park, we could have residential, and we could have the R and D component, and you know, we could have ways that parking could, in a coffee shop, right? So then during the weekdays, the work, the employees are parking, working and getting coffee and eating lunch at the park. During the weekend, that parking lot can be used for like the families to take their kids to the park and get coffee. You know, because they can't sleep because their kids are waking them up all the time. You know, kind of like, let's figure out how to not leave a giant parking lot, you know, for R and D empty on the weekends. Let's figure out how to maximize that use as many times, you know, throughout um, the day and the weekdays as possible.
Okay, well, that's our first talking point on land use. Um, I'm seeing one more commissioner hand raised. Matt?
Uh, thank you. Yes, thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so two points. One is, I see mixed use, mixed zoning as slightly different than PD. Mixed to me is it has a component of commercial, residential, um, retail, you know, um, and not all one uh, type. Whereas PUD can be all one type. It could be all residential, it could be all, you know, commercial condos, it could be. So I don't equate mixed use zoning and PD, you know, to be the same. That's number one. Point number two is we can do this. We can get rid of PD and, you know, get it something, but I think the best technique would be to incentivize the landowner and you know, tell them that, you know, by getting rid of your PD, we're not trying to downzone your property with, you know, we are actually trying to intensify so your property can be worth more because of our action. You know, we're not trying to um, we're not trying to lower your property value or your um, you know, the worth of your property by our actions. You know, what we're trying to do is to uh, fix things within our zoning codes, but at the same time, make sure that we don't um, you know, hurt, you know, homeowners, landowners, you know, in the process. So I am, I would like to highly recommend that we keep that incentive. Uh, actually, the way Stephen answered the question, you know, took away a lot of my concern and is that our goal is not to eliminate it, it's just trying to eliminate the abuse, you know, and so because of that, you know, I would be supportive in, in support of it as well. It's just that I think we should do it through. Um, as they say, you catch more flies with honey than vinegar. So, you know, we should remember that. That's all. Thank you.
I can expand on that just a little bit because I, I do understand and appreciate the concern that a property owner may have with any land use change. I, I would be very curious of myself if the city was imposing such a change or on, on, on my particular property. I, I think if we do this thing correctly and we set the, we set it up correct, we do it correctly, um, we'll hopefully quell any of those fears because it's not really our, it's right now, our PD, let's say your commercial property, going back to that commercial example I just gave a moment ago. Anytime somebody's proposing a land use change and say they, they get a new tenant and they're going from commercial, they're going from a retail to office, they need to go get an administrative plan development permit. And they want to go back from office to retail again. Well, guess what? They need to go get another permit. And so it, it's very detrimental to local business owners that they're having to go through all of these staff level discretionary entitlements to allow individual land use changes and when we could be setting up and propping up. And it kind of, it's going to segue to another discussion point that we have later about uh, just establishing more basic parameters for when and how we should be allowing uses to establish those conditional uses which we have in our community to make this process a lot more transparent, a lot more accessible and a lot easier to go through than what it currently is. I, I'm hoping that if I was in the shoes of a develop, of a property owner, at the end of the day, I would be itching to, for this change to happen if we've done it correctly. Because again, i- i- hopefully it's unlocking them, if they're building in the right direction or going the right way, that it's more and easier to do, not harder and they're not being burdened by this change. That, that's the intent. So I, I, it's going to take definitely some policy language and, and work to do, but that, that's where we're headed. We're not trying to penalize anyone. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and move us to the um, I, I think we've heard from everyone on this one. Okay, I'll then move us to the next, next slide. Um, land use, uh, so we also ask about plan boundaries. So um, we've identified a staff, an issue where believe it or not, our individual plan boundaries, they do overlap in some areas. So we're hoping that we could maybe correct this as part of the general plan update process. What we do is we identify on our land use map, like that preferred land use map you saw moments ago. It'd be a great opportunity to have a similar company map that's actually showing the boundaries of all the area plans. We say, this is what it is. Irrespective of what the area, area plan boundaries themselves say, we identify with the conflicts maker and we tighten them up so that there's a single boundary. So you don't have a single property which is subjected to multiple area plans technically, which might have conflicting requirements. So uh, uh, we see that as more of a cleanup effort, a staff, but o- obviously would also prevent, present the opportunity of modifying or changing the limits of area plans. So an example there is the, we, we recently took forward a project on Winchester. Um, it's a small two, 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 single family homes are being demolished in exchange for a new mixed use 15 unit development. But that project was just outside the boundaries of the Winchester Boulevard master plan. Why it stopped two parcels short, I don't know. I mean, maybe it was trying to uh, recognize the adjacencies of residential further to the south, but that's a, that's one of those plan boundary issues which we're talking about. So are there any area plans, area limits, which we've identified as concerns? I mean, although that project was just approved, I mean, maybe it doesn't get built. I mean, maybe that's a good example for that, an area that bump, bump, bound, we do move south. So that when it redeveloped in the future, it would be subject to the Winchester plan. But examples like that was the conversation point here. And I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and stop on that point before I move on to the next one. And again, just as a show of hands, if anybody has any concern about it, go ahead and raise your hand. Otherwise, the staff recommendation will just move forward and then okay, so I'm not seeing any hands raised, so going to move on to the next one. Um, central business district. So since the general plan update uh, started, our C3 is now a little bit out of date. We, we need to make some a- adjustments and modifications to text to reflect that we have these uh, pedestrian oriented activities. Again, a cleanup act, uh, effort, we said as a simple yes, and uh, with no hands shown, thumbs up. Okay, I, the thumbs up is help. It, it helps because it's just, I can advance a little faster. Perfect. I definitely want to be respectful to anybody, if anybody has any comments, go ahead and stop me if I, if I do skip over. Um, Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay, should the Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay um, section or preferred land use map include more specific direction on intended land uses by site? So this is where we were, I mentioned it earlier, but uh, that Hamilton Avenue specific plan overlay, it does call for mixed use and high density, uh, I think residential land uses, but isn't go so, to so specifics. It's, you got this big hashing area. So the idea is right now it's punting down the road. It's saying as far as, as a policy, as part of this general plan, we will create Hamilton Avenue specific plan. But right now, come adoption of the general plan, it's just going to be general commercial until such time that we adopt that plan. Right? So if we wanted to provide more policy direction upfront, change land use designations, otherwise that would have been the chance. Um, and I think we already talked about that as part of the land use mapping exercise. And then the second one is the Dell Avenue area specific plan overlay. Uh, should the landy settlement contemplate the creation of a specific plan overlay for the Dell Avenue area uh, and pay for, in order to pay for public infrastructure improvements? And I know Dell Avenue was a kind of a sensitive topic in the past. It was not well received by the community uh, in part, I mean, it extended beyond Winchester Boulevard into that, a, a section of the, of the uh, the Santa Mas area neighborhood plan area. So we, our staff suggestion is that we do that. We still have it. We do robust community engagement, but we stop it short of Winchester and not extend beyond. So um, the therapy is in agreement on those. I'm going to keep moving on. All right, I'll try to, I'll try to pick up the pace here a little bit because you're seeing that we're on a slide three or five of just the land use element. All right, um, four or five, uh, research and development zoning, the landy settlement calls for the creation of new research and R and D uh, to replace the existing controlled manufacturer. So thi- this one really comes down to I, our, maybe a little bit of a conversation point with uh, the general plan advice. It kind of came about possibly as part of the general plan advisory committee meetings is a, is a feeling that we should kind of revisit all of the standards in the controlled manufacturing. At staff, we were saying, well, we weren't planning on that as a work plan item immediately following the adoption of the general plan, but maybe we should be. Maybe we should revisit all of the development standards, the setbacks, height, uh, landscaping requirements, everything for that area because it's so unique and we are talking about increasing the floor area ratio of it. But as staff, I'm now maybe even amending our original uh, recommendation here. We're saying not to rely on develop, to re- rely on the, the existing development standards. And obviously, we would be immediately following adoption of the general plan until such time we have time to create new development standards or govern the new research and development zoning district. But um, uh, we're interested in hearing your feedback on it. So I'm actually saying go ahead. I mean, if we, we think that area is so unique and so specific, that it warrants its own new development standards, that we would, that we would not re- follow the staff recommendation in this case.
Well, I, I have a question, Stephen. Knowing, knowing the history and just even this general plan process, how long would it take to kickoff, initiate, proceed, hire consultants and go through an area plan overlay? I don't know. I, I mean, I know city council voted to not proceed, but keep the Dell area plan for future precedent or not precedent, but um, I don't know, like historical document, so it exists, but we're not going to use it, but it, it just to me, where I'm going with this, it seems like this would take years to get this area plan developed. So we're going to work with what we have today for years.
Right, and I don't want to blend the two too much. I mean, we do have the Dell Avenue area specific plan. This is for the actual R and D zoning. But um, I mean, there is an implementation chapter that's included. Uh, it's actually one of the things that I think is powerful in this general plan. It's identifying the prioritization of, of specific policies or guidance. So it'd be the planning commissioner even de- designated, we think this is a high priority thing. It should be in a short-term plan or mid, midterm plan or long-term. Keep in mind that if it's a 20-year plan, right, or 30-year plan, or it's because that's 2040, right? It could be on the, you know, the the uh, 2020, 2039 until we get to it, right? There are, there are funding issues which are also related to this. So I, I can't speak to exactly when and how, but this would be a policy discussion. Obviously, you'd be competing against other priorities every given year against other work plan items as part of our, our budget. If we have budgetary limitations, this might not come up for quite some time.
Um, I have a question. Uh, the research and development term analogy, I mean, and I come from the private sector and I worked in industrial and in high tech and and it, it, research and development has a particular meaning to me. And, and so I guess the question is, are we defining what research and development really means? Um, because you know, to me, research and development is a bunch of engineers, and only engineers in an office. Okay, so, so um, how do you define research and development as, as a, as a zoning district?
Well, we would be now relying not on the zoning district, not the, our current designation is controlled manufacturing or current zones. You'd be looking at the current general plan land use designation. I could probably pull it up here in a minute, how they've defined it, how it's been defined in the the envision Campbell draft general plan. But um, yeah, I mean, it's kind of envisioned this kind of higher technology uses. It's kind of calling for some of those things which we've talked about, maybe a mix of uses where you, you won't be exclusively engineers in a building. You might have, you might have uh, ancillary uses on site like a daycare, which could help support those engineers uh, and their children or cafes or otherwise daytime activities uh, that they could go and serve and use, provided they were anc- ancillary or secondary to the primary activity of the site, which would be a Kijob Center activity. Now, we do have very detailed land use lists. You saw that super table sharing you guys earlier. We have over a hundred and I think 78 distinct land use designations and growing. And uh, what could be allowed on any given site would, we would be modifying that table more than likely, or the, the, that list of permissible or conditional uses based on um, when we create this new R and D zoning district. So that'd be a future conversation that the planning commissioner would be having with city council. But yeah, I mean, generally speaking, technology centric uses, not manufacturing, not, not theaters, not hotels.
Yeah, 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 I understand. I just, I'm just concerned about if so, if, if um, if it, you know, I, there's some obvious things you can exclude, but then, you know, I don't know, if, if Kaiser came in and said they wanted to double their, their Kaiser s- system there, you know, they have a big Kaiser complex now, right? It's up the street. So it's like, well, we, we want to build more Kaiser. I mean, is this going to exclude them from building more Kaiser?
No, I, I understand your reservation with the term research and development. I would not say it specifically controls you to have to be conducting some research activity onsite. So it is more broad than that. It does allow for a range of, I mean, it could, I mean, they exist, I mean, again, I keep, even I'm, I'm starting to blend things here a little bit. Our current controlled manufacturing zoning district does allow for um, medical, it does allow for office uses, doesn't have to be a research office. You could have a travel agency or all kinds of different types of office uses, conceptually in that, in that zoning district. I imagine conceivably the R and D would be also not any more limiting per se. Maybe it would incentivize encourage those uses which we want to see happen. But how, how we get there from here to there, it's kind of an open-ended question because we're creating a new zoning district.
So Stephen, um, personally, I don't understand this. We, we talked about the Dell Avenue um, development and the uh, zoning there shown in gray on, on the land use map. Uh, I mean, we talked about potential of having a campus and the business park um, there with There with different files and that type of stuff. How would treating that as a controlled manufacturing zone impact the ability to? Do something a bit different there and create a campus?
Well, I mean, that that kind of comes down to the market conditions, right? A a large developer could probably come in and buy a number of his parcels and redevelop them. But you what you're going to find is limitations with things like the floor ratio and the setbacks, which would be. This advantageous for those uses to come in. Also, we're more limiting. So those things like daycares and other activities which might serve to support an R and D research campus like environment. Or even those things that you the planning commission were mentioning earlier, like. Residential activities, your onsite, like what Google's doing in downtown San Jose, where you are blending in employee housing and Apple into a certain extent. Or less much lesser extent. That would conceivably be something that which a new research development zoning district could open up the doors for. But you'd also be talking about changing the land use designation as well. And Dell Avenue's specific. Dell Avenue, a specific plan overlay could also help to maybe address some of those issues as well if certain conditions were met. So I mean, if we're, I mean, we're starting to. Get maybe a little bit more specific than we need to at this stage because we are, I we have heard very broad feedback from the planning commission about the Dell Avenue area. And some of the feedback and the potential options which we might want to explore there. And this is really getting into the granular level of detail about. Just the application of development standards. I think that based on the guidance we've already heard. I've already heard enough direction that we need to revisit these standards a little bit more comprehensively than just for ratio. And not just following staff recommendation on this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, moving on. So these are some exciting topics coming up. Drive through establishments. So should drive throughs be restricted to certain land uses or prohibited in certain locations in the city? So on this particular point, it is a perfect example. We just threw a number out there. I can't say we're we're married to it or anything like that. We said that. As as an illustrative example, staff would recommend prohibiting drive drive through uses for properties located within one half mile of a light rail station. Half a mile, quarter mile. I mean, we're just trying to promote a lot of some of these discussion points which we've raised are intended to help solicit. Planning cushion feedback and discussion. I do see two hands raised.
You know. In my view, we're really trying to create a vision of sustainability and for the environment. Along with the other things we talked about and, you know, with what's happening there, I just don't see. How drive throughs really fit in with that longer term goal. So we were to we always talk about making a more walkable community, having alternative forms of transportation, things like that. This is pretty much in conflict with that. It's just promoting people taking short trips in their cars or. You know, getting off the highway and having non local traffic and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Chair. With the chair on that, I think this topic goes really against. What you were talking about about trying to make it more sustainable. And reduce the lines because this is directly encouraging car use. So I'd be in favor of just banning completely, but that's just my view.
I would just.
Yeah, let me. This was a hot button for me too. I certainly would support banning altogether, short of banning them all together. I don't think the proximity to light rail station would be sufficient. The two examples that that happened in the last couple of years where they were they were rejected was partly. A part of the reason was because they were adjacent to. Well, they were they were accessed. They were accessed on very busy corridors. Hamilton and and Bascom. And they were both adjacent to residential neighborhood streets. And and so at the very least, I would I would. Be very strongly in favor of writing a restriction that would include. Those kinds of restrictions where they're near are adjacent, immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Because those were some of the reasons why those were rejected.
Yeah.
And that was that's as well as the heavy heavy traffic on the on the two corridors. So. So those things have to be factored in, short of banning them totally.
Yeah, and I think when we think about just the immense amount of. Feedback that we had from residents and kind of the incredible. What would you call it? Kind of a ground swell, right, of rejection to In-N-Out and the other one was. Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A. Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty clear. That the community is incredibly opposed to drive throughs and the traffic. Assessments that are done, you know, they. When I see the drive throughs that are implemented in other locations, you know, and and the incredible amount of backup, it doesn't seem like probably what was. What was presented is really consistent with the reality once it's built. So and I think that's what the the residents were. Communicating when they spoke out about these two items. I see three hands up. Who's next? Matt?
Thank you. So as a transportation engineer. I think you're absolutely right. It's got it. We have to take the traffic. Report and traffic counting to account. When we think about these things, but. I have a little bit of a difficulty. Saying that, you know, if they're within half a mile of a. Transit station, that it's not the right place, you know, I. If the traffic numbers work out. I think it is convenient to some now. Do we want to encourage people to get out of their cars? Absolutely. But until we have proper alternatives. I'm not sure if we want to. Punish them, you know, by, you know, for example, one of the gentlemen's that got up and talked about in the as a as member of the public. You know, when you have kids in the car. And you just, you know, can't get out of the car to go inside. Drive throughs may work for you, you know, and so I know that's not all the time, but. I've heard that enough number of times in the previous sessions that, you know, I think we should. Traffic, I think, should be our guiding light, not the proximity to the. Train station. Thank you.
But he was also in Santa Moss. So if he had a little neighborhood mixed use development with some stores nearby, his problem would be solved.
I guess, you know, you you're providing alternatives that to me, that makes perfect sense, you know, but if they're not. Alternatives, you know, then. I think we have to take that into account.
Yeah, I I'm I agree. I'm just responding to kind of the time and the investment both by the the two companies that came forth, right? And the immense pushback from the neighborhood that came in and, you know, that's pretty much what we heard loud and clear. So, okay, Commissioner Cray.
Oh, yeah, just on two quick points on that. One is, and I see what the staff did here with the one half mile. From light rail, but I guess I would suggest because the. Really, that's the traffic at 17 and Hamilton and Hamilton and Bascom. Are just such nightmares. I don't know why we don't just. Prohibit drive throughs in that Hamilton Avenue Overlay District or whatever the name was called for that specific district there by the price site. I think that would maybe make more sense. And then. You know, in terms of the I I would fall on the side of Commissioner Cam Car there. I definitely. Do I hate, I hate, we don't want any work hours, but I think I think drive throughs would work fine in certain areas of. Campbell. I know that with the In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A, you know, we heard a lot of. People that didn't want them, but but those were people that lived right near there and. Kind of understandable. I think there are. Fair number of people that would have liked to have those drive through uses. So I, yeah, so I would be against a total ban on drive through. It's a shame that we need them, but I do think they 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 feel a good service for some people in certain situations. But yeah, and I guess I would just prohibit it in that over in that Hamilton Overlay District because that's that's really the the. Traffic nightmare area there and it drive throughs there just doesn't seem to work, but. Or maybe something like that. So anyway, thank you.
Finder.
Thank you. So I'd be comfortable with being that I would like to make sure that we're talking about banning drive through restaurants as opposed to drive through pharmacies and ATMs. Especially drive through pharmacies, I think have been particularly vital this last year. And if we're if we were not to just ban them entirely, it might be. Reasonable to define parts of the city as being transit first or pedestrian first versus car first and set coordinated policy in them like. This is a pedestrian area. We designed the streets so that you don't go faster than so and so. We, you know, don't have parking minimums here. We don't allow drive throughs. We have low speed limit, stuff like that. I can see this as part of a coordinated policy, but also I'd just be happy to, you know, say no new restaurant drive throughs in the city.
Okay, Stephen, does that help you?
It does. And Commissioner Buckfinner picked up on the points is going to emphasize that although we're identifying a staff, just that half mile thing, but the the question does read to. Limiting to for certain uses and not others. Yes, I I only heard from the one commissioner on that point, but I think most of the comments were in relation to the. The the restaurant component. And I'll just offer broadly speaking that because of the land, the changes which are being proposed as part of the preferred land use map. The neighborhood commercial designation, which is being proposed up and down on the east side of Bascom. Will resolve the future Chick-fil-A situation on that area. And if you take that and because you can't have drive through with neighborhood commercial to outdoor active use. And then on if you you take that in combination with if we were to limit it from the Hamilton Avenue Specific Plan. If and when that comes along, then that wouldn't that wouldn't include the in and out site, right? But you could always have that next project one over that's on the other side. And that that could potentially support such use. So I, yeah, I have enough feedback on that. I just wanted to make sure that the mission was. Well rounded in that conversation.
Well, I just want to make one more comment. It's like, you know, there's there's, you know, a third corridor. There's Winchester as well. And so Winchester has become a fairly heavy traffic area. And so I'd hate to see you. Pick Bascom and Hamilton corridors and not really look at the bigger picture of the of the city in beyond those. So just in those in those terms, it's like. You know. You know, maybe somebody wants to have a a new drive, you know, In-N-Out comes back and wants to put a drive in and Winchester. It's like, well, you know, we're not covered on that. So we have to go through the whole hassle again that or they went through. So. So I would look at it in a little bit bigger picture in terms of our corridors and. Consider it that way.
Well, what I'm hearing mostly from the planning commission, I'm summing up the comments, is that the restaurant uses are more problematic. Those are the ones which we really want to constrain. Really looking at more limiting even citywide for that type of activity. And then that these other uses, the ATMs, the pharmacies, those in which we will be a little bit more flexible on, we might identify. Appropriate locations for those. This does kind of get back to another point, which eventually I I don't know which point it is, but I hopefully it's coming up here pretty soon. About it's under economic development where it talks about. How should we go about facilitating the uses which we want and identifying those correct sites where they can come? That way people aren't spinning their wheels. Wasting time and money and energy valuing sites that don't meet basic criteria that have been hopefully preset. And drive through establishments could be one of those uses which we identify as a conditional use. That needs a little bit more upfront guidance to figure out where and how we allow them in our community. And we have special use requirements on motor vehicle repair facilities, but we don't have them on drive through establishments the same way. That'd be an opportunity for us to expand there. So I have plenty on that. Kind of segue into our next question. Should there be any policies which prohibit a particular land use? Or conversely incentivize its development? So you do see certain activities, let's say, some of these building a freestanding parking garage, like we saw that eight by eight building. It was associated with another office building, but it was in fact freestanding building. It wasn't being put underground. It wasn't being tucked in. Side of the building. It wasn't being hidden in some way. And then should you be trying to incentivize and say that try to, we don't want to see that type of building. What are ways that we could? Really limit them from happening, like incentivizing underground parking. So say for every. Level of underground parking you put instead of surface level parking, you get X or Y. So that's that's the conversation point here.
Yeah, incentivize park building. So yes, it sounds good.
And if if the any other commissioners have any comments, if you want to raise your hand or. On this particular point, this is a little bit more open and it's not really a staff recommendation. We're just recommending. I guess we do have the one prohibiting freestanding parking garages, but there's any other uses that you think warrant treatment.
Like, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you so much. I mean, if I if, you know, what if they put a, let's say, a living roof on top of it, you know, what if they? You know, I mean, currently, you know, parking is not in that intensive use, you know, here, but. At some point, it could be maybe not for promoting. You know, gas driven cars, but maybe electric cars, maybe a storage place for all these Ubers or Lyft cars that. Would in the future be serving people, you know, they can park somewhere overnight, get charged up, you know, and then. Come by, you know, so I think we have to look long term and. Not eliminate possibilities, but if they can prove themselves, then, you know, we should give them a chance, you know, so. I. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with blanket, you know, elimination of. Or prohibition, you know, of particular land use, you know, just. Give them a chance to prove themselves. They have a high bar to cross, but. That's my say.
Yeah, I I think Commissioner Cam Car raises a good point, actually. I probably see the the intention trying to ban car parking for. Combustion cars, right, conventional cars, but, you know. If it's for electric cars or electric transport or, you know, hydrogen power or whatever, and you have the opportunity to put green green roof on it. That should be definitely something should be discussed from necessary. No, it can't be done because of a. You know, a a ruling. I share share Commissioner Cam Car's comments.
Yeah, or a park or a library or a coffee shop on top of that parking garage.
Spaceport.
Any of that creative stuff.
Do you consider the you you consider the Second Street Garage downtown as a free parking, freestanding parking garage? Because it does have the commercial in front. And so that is obviously a much more attractive solution. So the question is, what's a freestanding parking garage?
This language is too vague. We really need some some objective standards.
And I'm I'm hearing all good points. I mean, we I'm not hearing that we want to completely limit it. Again, some of these questions we're raising just to be a little bit provocative to. Try to solicit conversation on these points, just throwing out a singular example of a use. We don't want to focus all on parking garages per se, but. Yeah, I mean, we can look at electric cars, living roofs. I mean, you can even look at parking garages that are adaptably reusable for. Future housing sites, you know, there's a lot of different ideas that could be. That way they're not single purpose structures and things like that. We can look into that a little bit more, but that's great feedback on parking garages. I'm not sure. I mean, we talked about. Just previously, the the drive throughs for restaurants might be one of those which are also limiting.
Sounds good. Thanks for being provocative, Stephen. That means you didn't mind my sarcasm.
If I can just pop in one more bit here. If if I can just pop in one more bit here, um. I I would uh suggest incentivizing parks and roof decks and maybe if you have like an improved. Park as opposed to just landscaping or something like that. It counts as more of your open space, like incentives like that are perfectly reasonable. Um, but I feel like banning parking garages or requiring underground parking is pushing on the wrong lever. Um, parking garages are expensive. Underground parking is super expensive. I think it's eighty thousand dollars a stall or something like that. And the only reason people build it is because we have really high parking requirements, like. We should just not require people to build so much parking if we don't want them to make so much parking.
Ready, Commissioner Cray? Did you have any more comments?
Well, I yeah, I was just gonna actually Commissioner Bookbinder kind of hit on. I was, I was, I liken the incentive, the incentivized side of this question I I liked. And I was gonna ask though in terms of underground parking because of the cost, I don't know how you can incentivize that so much, but I like the idea of of. It's not incentivizing the complete use, but you know, incentivizing creating parks and undergrounding your utilities. If you're going to have parking, it's certainly better underground than above ground if you got to have it. Uh, so I don't, I don't know what kind of incentives we can put in there, but uh, I think we we can work on incentives. Thanks.
Um, I wanted to respond to that incentive question, Commissioner Cray. Um, on a recent project, the city I was working on, you know, told us if you do a TDM. A transportation demand management report. On the site and identify ways to lower. The trips that people would make to that site. That um, they would lower the parking requirement. So as an example of transportation would be to provide shuttle vans. To provide, you know, um, uh, I don't know, bus tickets, you know, to provide. Other ways that people can get to the site. Instead of being single drivers in there, you know. In their, you know, otherwise unoccupied cars, you know, and so those incentives, you know, I think. Um, do exist. You know. Thank you.
All right, looks like we answered that question. Moving on.
Yeah, great. So we just tackled land uses is honestly our largest element. The rest of these are actually going to fly by relatively, I think a lot faster. Um, most of these again, uh, kind of going back to our straw poll method, it might be a little bit faster to go through because they're. Staff recommendations are sometimes obvious. I mean, because they're just cleanup efforts and the like. This very first one is a great example of that. Uh, it's just we have adopted a VMP policy. This thing's out of date. I'm not even. Unless I'm seeing otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and get moving along on the next slide here. Um. Transportation demand management. So the the new general plan has policy language. It speaks to um, requiring a. A TDM management plan. Uh, for projects warrant uh. But it's not really clear when and how those will be required. So staff were kind of flagging this need to maybe establish a threshold even now as part of the general plan. Or push that on to the our traffic consultant to do instead. That come up with a suggested limit like X number of peak hour trips in the AM or PM. Warrant a TDM. Study. That way it's clear, it's concise, you know, upfront developers know what they're getting into. They know when they trip that threshold, that they're going to need to do this and come up with a. A plan. So a staff are recommending, let's not try to answer that question right now, fifty, a hundred, two hundred net new trips. Let's let our traffic consultant do their, do their, their work, get paid. They get paid the big bucks for a reason. So I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so I'm going to move on to the next one. Uh, shuttle system. So this has been a longstanding up. Question that's come and gone over the years about whether or not the city should establish a a community shuttle system. To serve the transit needs of the city. And again, it doesn't really provide direction on where and how this would be served or how it would be funded or. Again, kind of almost relating back to that prior point. We're interested in hearing the planning commission's feedback on that, but minimally staff were recommending. To identify potential funding source for the shuttle. And determine what areas it may serve. So and again, funding isn't exactly a a role the planning commission per se. But you have this idea that. Um, if it's serving a certain area, then maybe there's certain. Exactions, fees, development impact, these things like that, which could come into play that could help fund it in that area for certain uses.
Well, I'll comment on the shuttle system. I I I know they've been uh talking about it a long time. And and they usually talk about the downtown to Prune Yard, which is what you mentioned is an example. I actually think that's probably the least. I'm not sure downtown to Prune Yard is is something that is all that important, but uh. It's three, it's three blocks of walking. But but a shuttle system that brings people in from other areas to the downtown or Prune Yard to me. If they, if if it's uh. If it's fundable, uh, uh, you know, uh, along the corridors. Um, that would bring people from outside the downtown area. Uh, would make more sense to me. Um. It would reduce the traffic in the area. We reduce the traffic on the corridors. Uh, in theory, if if people would uh. Uh, buy into it, but uh. It to me, the 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 least likely shuttle thing is, and that's just my personal take on it is. Between downtown and the prune yard.
I get, I guess, add my comments on that. Um, I think in principle, yes, it's a good idea. I think it needs carefully thinking about. Probably being run by a private company as opposed to. By the city. Um, my hesitancy is. Maybe some of the public transport services that we have are not necessarily optimal. Um, so one one for repeat that. Um, make it electric. Um, and funding sources could be, uh, let's start charging for parking in in the downtown, right? Uh, and then show people benefit, right? If people have to pay, that's and or we. There's some type of. Charge to um. Uh, you know, deter people from parking, but then you also need to make the area accessible, which could be a nice way that so the shuttle system could make it. Uh, accessible, more accessible for.
Yeah, and I think starting with um, you know, some of the events that we have in downtown Campbell, like the music in the park and other things, you know, having like. The ability for families to take some public transit. From some picked up location throughout the city to downtown and back out, I think would be really nice. That would be a start anyway. Uh, Commissioner Bookbinder?
Uh, yeah, the the thing that confused me about this a bit was especially for the downtown, downtown to Prune Yard route, we have a VTA bus that runs every fifteen minutes along that route. Um, we have, you know, three buses that run every fifteen minutes. We have the light rail that runs every like peak times like, I think, ten to twelve minutes. When it's running. Um. I'm, so I I'm curious as to. What we, what routes we would run that the VTA is not already running. If we want to run like an occasional like coverage route, that would be. Something very different from running like a a constant shuttle. And I'm, I guess I I I don't see the particular benefit of running. Our own service that's not part of VTA's network, which already heavily serves the city.
I think, I think there's lots of advantage not making part of the VTA. Right, um, we don't have a VTA train, hasn't run for months, right? So I I question, and even when it is running, I question its effectiveness. So um. I I I would wouldn't think it's a good idea to tie it in, tie it into public transport at all. I think that's just going to slow it down and make it really expensive.
Very contentious topic in uh other patients I've lived. I've been supportive of a shuttle system. Uh, but knowing Campbell very well, obviously on the commission here, I. I can't envision how it would work. Perhaps the chair's recommendation of. A event shuttle or a specialty shuttle may be beneficial, but yes, the. Walkability to the prune yard is very simple. The employment centers of our city don't necessarily demand it at this stage. And perhaps won't ever. Um, maybe if there's expansion of Delaria or some of our corridors. You might want that, but again, Commissioner Bookbinder, you hit it on the head. VTA, whether people like it or not. It it does run straight through our s- our city center and on Winchester. Linking the prune yard. So I I'm not. I I don't feel that this should be supported. Perhaps the studies, uh, the way I read it. Uh, if staff can correct me, it's an evaluation. Maybe there's continued evaluation, but I don't think this should be deemed as a. Green light to build a system, especially when our our city is fairly walkable.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, that area is probably the most walkable area. When I think about the weekends and the farmers markets, that's where you really see the. Density of people that are actually walking that area. It's that they need to get. To and from a little bit further out.
Yeah, and I'll broadly offer on responding to Commissioner Rivlin's comment that a lot of the policies in this general plan are very. You're soft, so they indicate the evaluate, consider. If evaluate whether you should consider, you know, so i- it's language that it's wishy washy. And it's part of a general plan where we're envisioning where we want to be. Twenty, the year twenty forty, do we envision that the city will have a shuttle service and how do we get there? Right? So um, that's kind of what we're trying to answer and we're we're trying to just get feedback. And I I've got plenty of great feedback on this one already. I asked about a fact.
Thank you, Stephen. I have seen some cities, can't remember their names, perhaps it was Cupertino. Of initiating a a paid Uber ticket for senior citizens or disadvantaged citizens. Perhaps that is part of that study. Maybe it's not a trolley bus or a, you know, big economy line van driving around the town. But um. A discount on in intercity travel, you know, we'd mentioned early in this meeting this evening. That the future of transit may change. Uh, we all might. Be, you know, you have one car and using, I know this is unlikely, but have one car and use a ride share for our second car. If we have families, so perhaps there's a opportunity for Campbell to, in if if we're meant to look at twenty forty. And and even beyond in some cases, I don't know that. Anyway. That's enough. Thanks.
Great feedback. Um, we're going to move on to the next slide. It's the uh, sensitive amounts, um, residential parking program. So this has come up, I think, multiple times in the past. Uh, we've had apartment communities. That have triggered residential backlash by residential communities. We've had adjacencies with other communities where there's been interest in having a residential. Uh, parking program. And uh. This action that's included the general plan would aim to institute residential parking programs in the neighborhoods with parking intrusion. And my question to our planet, our question to the planning commission is, are there any concerns to the creation of such a program? And a staff are recommending the limiting the creation of residential parking programs in areas of the community. Where such parking should not be prioritized, such as in certain areas like the downtown of in certain distance light rail. This kind of touches on a point that Commissioner Buckbinder had mentioned earlier. Which was, should there be almost like areas in the city where we have. Park cars are the priority, pedestrians are the priority, right? So that's kind of touching on. This kind of this same topic conversation point. So. That's that's uh, my 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 part of it.
So if I can chime in, um, I know one of the um, questions in my mind has been. The residents who complain of parking issues. Are they parking their own cars in the garage? Or are they parking their cars? In the street or on the driveway as well, you know, and so. Um. And so I would be as hesitant. Approving such a parking program unless it's shown. That residents are, you know, parking a car in the garage, but they can, they're still. You know, are having trouble. Finding parking in other streets rather than. Renting the garage yard or, you know, keeping a whole bunch of stuff in the garage and. Not being able to park there and then complaining about. Parking issues, so. You know, it's, that's too specific, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to. Say that, you know, that. We should, you know, um, consider all the factors. Before we go for such programs.
So this question Stephen is asking. Um, whether we agree to limit the creation of these parking programs. Right? Because they are close to. High density areas where we want to encourage walking, right? As opposed to saving spaces for driving. So.
Or or even prioritizing existing. Usually the residential parking programs are benefiting the existing residents. So you're, you are prioritizing, say in a downtown environment. Say surrounding streets around a downtown. That those existing residents or single family homeowners will be benefiting from the creation of a. A parking program that they get a pass and. That customer is driving from, you know, Los Angeles who wants to go visit our downtown, can't park on the street in front of their home. So it's it's comes down to prioritization. So I mean, you'd be benefiting, say, the commercial users. Potentially at the expense of the residential homeowners in the area. Uh, of which people would be parking in front of their homes. Now, kind of touching on the prior comment. I mean, now, single family homes could convert their garages into ADUs, a bunch of other things that are kind of happening. There's a bunch of legislative, and I don't know. So that that yeah, that that hopefully answers your question, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, so you want us to raise our hand if we have a comment or raise our hand if we agree?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, I mean, if you believe that it should be limited in any way. On where and how we would go about the formation of these, of these parking programs. So you would raise your hand to that effect, and if you have a comment. You you'd let it be known.
Uh, yeah, let me, let me, uh, I I would definitely. Uh, I would definitely. Uh, make it very limited in the city if at all. I mean, to me, based on my knowledge, I don't know what. Whether there's other areas of the city, but I live in a downtown area and uh. I I'm quite familiar with how how the 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 north of downtown, the south of downtown neighborhoods get parked up. Um, uh, when people come to downtown, especially on uh. In the evenings. And uh, during festivals. Um. It's not so much, uh, I my gut, my gut feeling is it's not so much about. About taking up parking spots. Uh, as it is as much of about the fact that it fills up the neighborhood and then people come walking through and. Throw things into people's yards and and uh vomit onto their, onto their lawns. Um. After a late night, but um. And I sus- I suspect that the downtown areas have requested this in the past. And probably gotten pushed back from um. Uh, the the business community, but um. Uh, I I think, I, you know, I I think beyond that, the the area of downtown, I I don't know of. Where there's that much intrusion. There may be that I just don't know about in the city and and those are the hotspots. Um, and to me, it's just a question of wh- whether or not uh. You know, there's a balance between uh, you know. Um, those being off limits and and uh. Making those parking available to uh. To um, uh, people who want to come to downtown. I mean, I've been in a couple of other places where the intrusion is, you know, places like. Memorial Park in Palo Alto, uh, downtown areas where there's intrusion into the residential area at certain times and. I'm sure they complain too, uh, but they they don't um. They don't limit the parking. So I, you know, I I have mixed feelings about the whole thing and it seemed to me it's something that uh. You know, it's 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 a, it's a, it's a neighborhood versus the, versus the business versus the council. You know, trying to figure out what's the best solution. So um, but I know there's a certainly an issue in the. In the north and south parts of downtown neighborhoods.
I I I think it'd be good to keep that option. Um. Rather than just saying, no, we shouldn't be doing it, because I think the prune yard is another area. Where that that's short on, yeah, either short on parking or has too many cars, which way we looked at, right? Um, and that spills out into the neighboring streets there as well. Um, it's not saying necessarily a problem, but I think it. It could be there, could be somewhere else, not having that ability to do it if required. I think it'd be unfortunate if we totally ruled it ruled out.
Uh, I I agree with Commissioner Ching on that. Um, this is. Uh, I'm going to take a somewhat more radical approach on this. This is a hard yes for me. Anywhere above a certain density, I think we should have permits for street parking, which nonresidents can pay to use hourly. Uh, if the alternative is free parking on the curbs, uh, we should raise the prices until parking is easy to get, try and seek to. Uh, if the alternative is free parking on the curbs, uh, we should raise the prices until parking is easy to get, try and seek to. Unbundle parking costs from housing costs, because anything else is car-free people subsidizing drivers, and if we want to discourage people from driving. We should not do that, um, I realize that people think that they own the curb in front of their houses, they don't, um. That that is. Like a public resource and they should, like, in any place where that is at all contested, people should, like, we should. Sell that. Uh, allocate it by price so that people don't just. It will, it would motivate people to clean out their garages.
Well, I think that gets back to the definition of what this is, I guess, because when I read this, I was. I was thinking that, you know, the residential permit processes, you live there and you get a permit so you can park in front of your house, I think you're. You're saying you don't agree with this, Adam, what you're saying is it should be more of like a. Capitalistic system for paying for street parking.
I. I think that having residential permits at all is a. Is a good first step, uh, people should have to buy them, um.
Okay, I think right now they're not purchased, right? They're probably just provided to residents.
No, no, they are.
Stephen, do you know?
They're purchased, so there's a pilot program, I mean, we've had a number of programs, but they're they're very, I can't say that they're. As aggressively priced as I imagine what Adam Buck, uh, Commissioner Buckbinder is imagining. Yeah, I think it's like fifty dollars a year or something like that, it's mostly just to cover the. The act of registering the user and capturing staff time to issue a pass and pay for the pass deposit.
Got it, okay.
Plastic itself, which is being placed in the user's car, it's not to.
Any any kind of, at least it's an, at least it's a. Some kind of inconvenience and we're not giving away the curb in the most valuable parts of town for free, so I'm I'm keen on residential parking permits.
Okay.
I have a question for Commissioner Buck, Buck Bull. Uh, do you feel the same way about all types of cars or just internal combustion engines, if it's like electrical, electric cars?
That's a good question, um, like, I I recognize that electric cars don't. Cause all the same problems that just internal combustion cars do, but they still take up the same amount of space, like. You still have sort of a competition for the space between pedestrians, bikes and cars, like, at above a certain density. No matter how clean the cars are, you cannot get around in cars without being in an eternal traffic jam. And yeah, that's that's the problem.
Thank you.
I'll just chime in real quick and uh, it's kind of all been said, but uh. Yeah, I, uh, as some commissioners said, I don't think we want to. I can't see why we want to prohibit any residential area from making its pitch. For a, uh, you know, parking. Program, uh. If, you know, if we're if we're lowering. Parking standards for, say, a big commercial development or a big multifamily housing. Project, and that definitely is impacting greatly a residential area, I I think they can make their pitch for. Parking program, and also just mentioned very quickly that there is a a movement about for uh. Multifamily housing in which residents could choose. Would would be, would would rent their parking spot if they wanted it. So if you wanted to cut your rental cost, you did, you don't rent a parking spot, and so your rent's lower. Uh, which has a lot of merit that program, but if those people are just not renting a spot and parking in the residential area, that's when you. Kind of wind up into the problems, uh, so I wouldn't, yeah, I I wouldn't prohibit a residential area from being able to to make their pitch. Thanks.
Okay, all great feedback, guys, um, let's go ahead and commissioners, let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, so. Our next element, so luckily this was only a one pager, so this is community design, we have a total, just terms of meeting management, we've just crossed over the threshold of ten P M. We've got. Not that much more, we've got three more elements, this is a one pager, and we have an open discussion. On, which is meant to kind of like capture, catch all for those other elements we're not planning on tackling. So for community design, um, I'm not sure if anybody had time to go through this element in depth. But it's touching on a lot of um, design principles and concepts which are often captured as part of the land use element. And the question which we're raising of staff is just broadly, first and foremost, is whether or not we feels that this this in and of itself. Liked from it and maybe folding them into the uh, the land use element. Looks like I I might be lagging there for a second, so apologize for that. And then um. Yeah, so go ahead and do, uh, and then, yeah, and then secondly, I guess I'm a related point. And this is finally where we're starting to touch on the objective standards conversation is, right now. The general plan doesn't really address the concept of objective standards, I heard earlier that we feels that maybe we need to go through the. The general plan itself and kind of look at it for objectivity. Uh. To the extent possible, to to a limited extent. But um, should this section, if we do have a community design element. Should it attempt to address the the need to create objective standards and provide any policy guidance related to their their development? The staff, we're we're working on. Uh, developing uh, objective standards, but we don't really have policy direction, say, in our general plan, it says or calls for staff to be developing new mixed-use development standards from scratch. To try to make something objective. We don't have policy guidance, and the general plan that calls for the creation of. Small lot, single-family development standards, but we know that they're going to be needed, especially if we fold the. P D. When we get rid of the P D zoning, so we can't just be. Uh, site-specific, you know. Process for determining what your development standard should be. That's kind of the second point. And um. Uh, yeah, I go ahead and defer to the planning commission's feedback on this element.
Commissioner, um. Cam Carr, did you have a comment? Put your hand up.
Uh, sorry, I had my hand up on the previous vote, so.
Ah.
I don't.
I have a question, um, on the, the staff would recommend folding the best principles of the community design into the land use element and removing the rest, I guess my question. Is what are, what are the one, what are the best ones and what are the ones that you want to remove, I mean. I I'm not quite sure I. I know what that is. I know, I know, I know I don't know what that is. In terms of which which are the best principles and which of the ones are removable?
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of a question we were leaving open into the planning commission, so it's kind of a, again, one of those. Thought-provoking comments, recommendations which we could raise in the report to try to solicit feedback on it. If you like everything you saw, I mean, obviously then we could be taking that and rolling it in. But if you saw certain ones that you didn't agree with as much, I know it's getting, I know that it is a tremendous amount of material to go through. It was, it was even for us as staff to go through it in the order in which we did it, it was a lot to kind of go through and and be prepared. Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, I I I think. Primarily what we'd be identifying is the need for a dedicated element first or not. And uh, or if we just felt as if from a consolidation perspective. I- if you are, if you were a developer trying to. Figure out what you could do with the land use of your property. Is it advantageous to be referring to a separate element to get the answers that you need for community design separate from land use?
Uh, I'm going to just jump in because I haven't seen other hands raised, um, I I get the sense that this was. Something that the people working on G-PAC put a lot of care and thought into, I I read the entire packet, I took notes on the the whole thing. And I got a really strong sense that this is, like. People who who came out for this had very strong feelings about how the city should develop, which you can see um, by things like um, C D one dot two, which require. Uh, required development to reflect the city's small-town feel, which seems to contradict some of our other. Parts of our general plan, um, there are some reasonable parts, C D one A, local improvement program, C D one B, uh, inventory are dilapidated program, uh, properties. They seem like those should be something we do elsewhere. Um. C D three, boundaries and edges, things are done with T one, you know, complete streets, uh, some of this, like, uh, C D three A, update our street design standards, C D three B, design guidelines for private streets and ped bike trails. C D three C, uh, street trees and C D four D, citywide wavefinding, they those seem like good ideas. But they, I feel like they should be in other places, like, I I really liked, uh, C D five three, which is um. Encourage publicly accessible plazas and so on, um, for example, C D six, the whole sustainable design goal should be rolled into the sustainability section, I I get the sense that a lot of effort was put into making. Essentially a design guideline when it's not an objective thing and it can't really be used as an. As a a required or mandatory component of our design, but clearly people put a lot of effort into this, and I'm wondering if we can, you know, take the subjective portions of this and make like a. A non-mandatory um, design guide for Campbell or something like that, because clearly, like, this does express something, it's just not something we can enforce, that's my thoughts on it.
Why can't we enforce it? If they're objective?
We can enforce the objective parts, but most of it is not objective. But we can enforce a small-town feel.
There there were areas where it said encourage, I guess you can't enforce encouragement, but if you struck. The word encourage and it's uh, C D six point three, um, passive solar design, energy efficient concepts, you could start to integrate that into the. As long as you took away the encourage word. So maybe staff's recommendation would be to remove all the. Non-objective, I I guess that's the next bullet, but. Take the design guidance and put into all communities. Removing any non-objective, I'm sorry, removing the, yeah, non-objective content. Or rephrasing it such that it's. Objective.
I, like, my my read is that a lot of it could be done like that, and but much of it couldn't and seems to contradict other parts of the general plan. And I think that for that reason, like, I I would be in favor of separating out the parts that are. Objective and fitting them into other sections, which, uh, like the land you sell near the sustainability element, and putting the rest of it into. Something not part of the general plan, but something the city would say, here, look, these are the opinions of the people of our city, get their opinions.
Okay, great, um, on the second point, I I think we just do, I mean, this is mostly a cleanup effort of staff, we're we're hoping that we'll get direction. That it's okay to go ahead and include policies related to the creation of objective development standards to facilitate. Makes use in small lot, single family. I I don't think that that necessarily should necessarily be controversial, but if you wanted to provide additional guidance of. As to what that should look like, you could, but I think we we would be capable of unfolding in such an item.
Hey, Stephen, uh, can I just ask one question, if it's appropriate right here, but uh, with our objective standards push, which is great. Is that going to necessarily entail an update to the Santa Mas area neighborhood plan, or when are we going to update that plan, or will we even have a plan, I I don't know what. What we're doing then.
No, yeah, so there's no plan to remove any of the plans as it stands right now. Um, the Santa Mas area neighborhood plan, as well as the Campbell Village area neighborhood plan, will be slated probably early next year to be advanced. We're we're really, put it like this, we're laser focused on the general plan and housing element at this time. As soon as we kind of get through the critical project pass of this, we're going to circle back. Focus on objective standards, we don't want to complicate the conversation too much, and I was thinking about all too much all at once.
No, I I'm only asking because, you know, there's so many of the items that we as a planning commission have that involve stamp, which is, you know, a third of the city. And a lot of it comes down to relatively subjective design standard, that's that's why, that's what I'm thinking about, so it's. Always top of my mind, but thank you.
Yeah, I I would just generally mention that we we did advance one of the area plans already through the objective standards process, the N O C A plan. And uh, it was kind of an eye-opening experience for us as staff, because it was, you know, I, it was a twelve-page staff report clarifying the issues with a one-page document. Um, so we're kind of encountering similar challenges with each of the area plans. And um, we're we're working through those, so just keep that in mind. All right, um. Seeing none, ready to move on to the next element, which is economic development. The effectiveness, so that we had this, I I I am even hearing about the tone of even the uh. Our our last element not necessarily matching up with our land use element, our community design and. Not exactly synchronizing throughout with the rest of the general plan, s- similar question we were raising here, staff is. The tone of this um, economic development element is, it's more forward-leaning, it's more aggressive, it's do more, achieve more. But then you have these policies, say, in the land use element, which are kind of locking into the existing floor ratios and doesn't really incentivize. Um, a lot of the things which the economic development element is calling for, so. Um, staff is just raising the the broad question of. Should we be trying to include additional policies or actions which could help attract new businesses or redevelopment areas of the community? Which could help facilitate or attract the type of businesses or uses that this element is calling for. And um. As as a general note, um, that perhaps uh. That I'll mention is that we do have a plan, it's a kind of a segue thing, we we mentioned earlier that we have these three concurrent work plan efforts that are also going on, the housing element was one. Objective standards is two, but three, uh, which will also be coming is the economic development plan update. So we plan on updating the economic development plan, which will probably provide a lot of guidance on this kind of stuff. Though if there's anything the planning commission felt as if we should be including now, um, that'd be helpful. Seeing one hand raised.
Okay, I can just, I can just go, uh, again, I read through everything, um, so. Uh, this is mentioned earlier, but um, you know, we have conditional uses for everything, we have an excess of discretion in general, we have an excess of parking, a very little farward caps, all this leads to a shortage of commercial space, we saw this. In the Winchester development where we had three little bits of retail, and, excuse me, buddy, uh, three little bits of retail and a lot of parking on the ground floor, similarly, with the Cresley development, we had. Uh, a few bits of residential, sorry, a few bits of commercial development, but most of it was set aside for parking, and the downside for that. Is, pardon me, my cat is very friendly, um, the downside of that is that, um, like, I've heard a lot of complaints that commercial rents are too high, which is because. Commercial space is too scarce, um. And. Yeah, um, there's a policy E D three three says more, says to make more efficient use of the city's light industrial land supply. I guess more efficient use would mean more intense use, so maybe a higher far, I think, I think a lot of this. Ties down to, um. It ties back to basically allowing easier use and more intense use. Like, again, you said that everything was sort of tied together here, and I think this is very much tied together to the stuff we talked talked about at the top of it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna move on to the next slide. Um, this, I think I mentioned this in a couple of times earlier, is this whole idea of performance standards. So we have a number of conditional uses, actually, this is of interest to the planning commission, because you're often considering conditional uses in our community, which come forward and. There's this feeling that there might be an opportunity to create additional performance and locational standards for discretionary uses. Which would be aimed at providing greater certainty in the decision-making process. And or completely limiting the need entirely if we've done it correctly, so that if you are proposing, say. A new medical office use, we've identified the sites where and how that they should be operating, the intensity, the frequency. That they can occur in a center or in a location or on a major boulevard or not in that. Retail storefront building, but the one in the back that's not as visible, you'd create locational performance standards, which would dictate when and how. We would allow uses like these to occur so that you have greater certainty. Uh, as a, as a prospective tenant or landlord trying to find a tenant. That the that the user may 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 work out, and you have more to review it against as the as the planning commission and decision-making body. So that's our strong recommendation to staff, is that we think that we. Should be creating such policies, attracting a business or community in areas that will be supported. And that we should have policy guidance in our economic development element as that point that Commissioner Buckbinder is making earlier. Is that we we should be trying to find ways of making it easier. Getting at the ease of uh. Of of supporting uses which we want to attract, and this would be one way to do that. And um. I think I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, thumbs ups, perfect, that that helps, because then I I don't need to pause the conversation. And then incentives, uh, there's a section, I uh, I identify. And then incentives, uh, there's a section, I uh I identify adequate incentives or funding to support economic development. In the community. So if there's any opportunities that we think that are missed in the economic development element that we believe that it should include or address. This would be your chance to brainstorm with us and and throw those out there. I'm seeing.
Uh, yes, I did take notes on just about everything. Um, so I just can possibly wait for the um for the housing element, but. The two things that I've heard about when I've talked to uh business owners are the high cost of commercial rent. And the how expensive it is to get employees here and that's related to the high cost of living. Um, it's just very hard to make. Ends meet here. I I think there's plenty of incentives to to run a business here like this is. Like we've got a, you know, great bustling downtown. We've got like, you know, festivals that draw tons and tons of people, but it's. Hard to run a business here because things are expensive in ways that we have at least some indirect control over. So that's really related to economic development, but I'm not sure the actions fit in here.
Yeah, I I generally summarize if it's related to helping promote more housing, we'll tackle those in the housing element. And and they wa- they could absolutely be in further into economic development objectives indirectly, but. Okay, with that, I think good news, we're done with another one and we're down to, I believe, our last planned key. Policy and it's only a a pager, this last one, we're open discussion. So conservation and open space. So staff, we flagged just two discussion points from this one. Um, one is one of the actions in the general plan calls for exploring the preparation of a TOD. Our TDR program, transfer development rights. Uh, which would be aimed at increasing the amount of publicly accessible open space. And we're just asking, should this program be also expanded to aid in the preservation of historic resources? So the the idea here is that if you have, let's say, the courtyard shops and I I really don't want to point out individual businesses. Let's say you had a um historic property, commercial otherwise, industri- uh in in a location. And you were to preserve that site. Um, in in perpetuity and you weren't trying to adaptively reuse it, be retaining intact, you could transfer. Whatever allowances in terms of floor ratio or unit count onto another receiving site. Which could then absorb that and you've lost your right to develop your site, but you've gotten that same equivalent benefit. You've sold it off or. Done something with it in in a way that could help preserve and lock in those historic resources for a longer period of time. And that that's the question point. So right now it's done exclusively for increasing the amount of publicly. Available open space. So if you were to give up land and make it a park, you could still transfer that, the rights of that to a different. Area or part of your project presumably. So our our staff is just yes, same thumbs up. Okay, moving on. Uh, reach codes and zero net energy. Um, should the conservation element be expanded, include reach codes and zero net energy policies? Hopefully some thumbs up. Awesome, great, moving on. Then these are the open discussion points. So these are the items, these are the elements which we didn't talk about. There are individual little limited discussion points under each one which might warrant conversation. Um, we didn't know how much time we'd have. It's already uh ten ten twenty-three, but this is really the last slide of tonight's presentation. So if we want to spend a little bit more time, a little bit less time on it, either way, I'm I'm open ended, but um. Uh, I would say that if a commissioner wants to talk about a particular element here that they would raise their hand and then. We'd invite them to.
Well, just let me jump in. I know we're at the end and. I'm not sure if the yawn to stair ratio is gonna, but um. If I think I'd offer, if there's any topics that we didn't touch on that you wanted to touch on, probably now is the time to bring it up. Um, so we don't forget that as we move on, so so we can probably stop there and. If you were burning to to get to a topic that Stephen and Tia, I think now's the time to to do it.
Um, I would like to bring up something. What about if the development? Um, is done in such a way that it. You know, is good for the elderly, you know, in our community, you know, so. Um, if we want to have more open space and if you want to have smaller footprint for the houses. One of the ways to accomplish both is to go higher up. And as you go higher up, two, three, four stories, whatever. That's gonna make it difficult for the elderly to get up to the probably the third or the fourth floor. Uh, well, if the developer puts in an elevator, you know, that's pretty expensive cost, but to make that. Unit. Also desirable for the elderly, you know, uh do we have any kind of incentive? To say, hey, if we do this, you know, there's a bonus for you. So it's not just the young and the um um able that can. You know, uh, you use those units, but so can the elderly or the disabled. Anyone?
Um, I had a couple of things. I had I had something on um. This is a real kind of a minor thing, but on safe streets, on the section on safe streets. Um, there's no ma- there's no mention of future. Consideration for, not that I'm a fan of traffic signals, but they 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 talk about, you know, calming. Traffic and things like that, but there's no mention um and paving and stuff like that, but there's no mention. Of of consideration for future traffic signals or stop signs. And I I I was kind of curious as to why I was kind of the kind of thing that was left out, which seems to should be within that area. Um. Again, I'm not a fan of more traffic signals, but I am a fan of more stop signs when they're needed. So it seems like it was just not there. Um, and then the only other thing I had was um. Uh, of significance is I I I got to the implementation section where where you have these one, two, three, four ratings. And um, I guess it's an implementation, right? Um, and and the thing I noticed, I didn't go over every, I didn't go over every single one, but I basically. Uh, um. Uh, yeah, there's a lot of ongoing, so I assume those those are legit. And and I didn't really notice the 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 ones, twos and threes too much, but but I noticed the fours and the fours were. You know, one, one is one to two years, two is one to five years, three is six to ten years. Um, four is as funding permits. And what I noticed on a lot of the fours. Uh, first of all, some of them are obviously. Where funding would be needed, like building a new. Uh, municipal building of some sort, but there were a lot of fours that were um consider. Implementing a public art plan. Can uh consider um. Uh, uh, alternative fuel fleet vehicles. Uh, and this is like, well, those don't really need funding to consider. Um, so it seems to me you either have to say we want to do it. Or if we're gonna just consider doing it, it probably should be in a shorter timeframe. Um, and there there was a number of those kind of things where where it was just a consideration. And it doesn't seem to me that should be a number four. Um, uh, like, uh, actually, uh, the public art thing. Uh, I I have a little connection with that because I used to be on the civic improvement commission and we we we. Had kind of a public guy. I worked, I helped work on the public art. Uh, 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 rules and um. We did, we did a little public art, so um considering public art in the future. Uh, we should be a little bit more definitive about that. It's like, yeah, we either want public art or we don't want public art. And so it seems to me that it it shouldn't be something uh that is kind of left to, but whenever we get to it. Um, so uh. My my gut gut feeling is a lot of the four and some of the other fours were about. Um, uh, you know, could, you know, with ways to help seniors and disabled and. Um, uh, lower income people get more resources at the recreation department. Uh, that seems to me that those should have a higher priority. It shouldn't be so um left to. Uh, the the kind of discretionary decisions about whether we have funding for that sometime in the next thirty years. So I'd like, I'd like some, uh, I'd like to be looking at those, some of those fours. And uh for either firming them up. Or rerating them. Um, because it seems to me if you're a four, you'll probably never get done. So. That's my take on that. So I have.
I guess I I have one on sustainability. Um. There's a really big section and a lot in it, so this is gonna probably appear as a uh. Uh, maybe a trivial one, but I think it's quite important. I I think Campbell's the the steer trees. Um, I see a lot of trees being cut down, which is a a subjective rather than objective measure. Um. Should we actually uh do a a a poll? Should we start? Try and measure um trees and I I don't think about somebody actually going around and counting all the trees, not with satellite imagery. But there's probably a service that could allow us to count the number of trees um. And actually have a baseline to see. How are we doing on that? Because I I I don't know. Are we actually planting more trees in Campbell? Are we living up to its name? Or are they dying? Or are we planting the wrong trees because of drought?
Good idea.
Like that.
I don't want to take us too off topic. I just let's respond by chair change. I just talked office, county office sustainability today. I'm trying to line this up for a bunch of. Urban forestry grants to fund a lot more tree planting and as part of that. Uh, they've asked us to do an inventory of our trees and we're gonna start working with our city arborist on that, so. So we got some work efforts uh focused on that area.
Adam, did you have a comment? And then I have a comment.
Um, I I have a couple. Um. Yes, okay, let me uh just going over my notes on on these things. So um. On on noise, um, I noticed that the the noise element only. I believe talks about rail vibrations, which I guess are important, but I I feel like we should talk more about um. Road noise, traffic noise. Um, it's directly related to speed. If you slow people down, if you slow cars down by ten miles an hour, the amount of noise cuts in half. Um, most of the noise is is traffic noise. Um, that I think that indicates that we should slow down more of our streets. Also, uh, we should ban gas powered leaf blowers and lawnmowers. Uh, AB thirteen forty-six just past the second house. I don't think it's been signed by the governor yet, but it enables a carb to. Um, phase out the use of gas powered uh. Leaf blowers and lawnmowers are basically small two stroke engines. Um, they're extremely loud. And they are extremely dirty, which gets into community health and wellness. They're terrible for air quality. Uh, a number of cities have already banned them. Uh, I have a list somewhere. Um. But all right, oh, uh, they've been banned in Los Gatos and Los Altos and a number of other places. Um. There'll be new ones will be banned starting in twenty twenty-four. We could be ahead of the curve there. Um. Let's see. Uh, in terms of community health and wellness, I just wanted to note that action CHW two D. Which is ensure that low income and minority populations have equal influence in the land use decision making process is kind of. It's not exactly actionable and it's in fact contradicted by CHW two E, which is utilize homeowner associations, community groups and business groups. As sources of individual volunteers for important appointed positions. Um. See, um, I also. Um, again, this is related a lot to our housing element, but I just want to mention that the only thing that mentions homelessness. Which is terrible for people in the community health and wellness section is policy CHW six one. Which says ensure that there's a diversity of housing types to accommodate all income levels. Which doesn't exactly talk about whether or not housing should be more affordable. Um, I'm very much in favor of action CHW six H, assess the walkability conditions for local neighborhoods and identify areas in need of improvement. Um, I would encourage us to really decide which streets should, people should be able to drive fast on and which streets we should try and. Make, try and make it so people drive slower on. Um, in the community design section, there was a a map of, you know. Here are arterials and I think that was a really good idea to to select those out, like that's where you drive fast. Everywhere else. You have a much lower speed and and the design speed of the streets is a lot lower. Um. And. Think. Um. Yeah, uh, some of these things apply in more places. Um, goal SA five from the safety element uh. Says protect citizens from hazardous materials. It does that include exhaust fumes and leaf blowers and lawnmowers because it should. Um. And I think that also is touched on by policy SA six one, which is monitor legislative updates. Um, on federal, state and regional regulations that pertain to community hazards. So that's what AB thirteen forty-six is. Um. And a lot of these things sort of like, again, tied together. Um, goal CSF. Two is support the continued learning of all Campbell residents by providing high quality, public and private educational opportunities and facilities. Which seems to indicate that teachers should be able to afford to live here and so on. Um. I think those are the things I wanted to mention, mainly, um, I think. Being able to define parts of the city as pedestrian first or bike first versus car first. I think would be a really good sort of planning framework to move into, you know, the next twenty years of of Campbell with.
Alrighty.
Also ban two stroke engines.
Think you mentioned that. Um, the uh, the other thing I wanted to mention around noise was um. Do we have anything in there that describes like limitations on noise coming from drones? Because drones do become a form of delivery in the future. Um, we may want to consider. What the decibel noise level or, you know, vibration, however it's measured should be so that we're not just hearing. Constantly all around.
You know, I I to that point, I I don't believe it's in the noise chapter. I think there is a mention of drones somewhere. I think it's in the land use element. Whether or not, I I have the keyword, search it real quickly to find it. I'm just going off memory. That's something about creating policies, local policies to address drones. Kind of anticipating this is a future potential land use issue. Uh, as staff internally, we were kind of discussing whether or not that was something that we would be locally tackling or that's something probably be. More broadly tackled in terms of FAA or some some other organization would be probably managing. A lot of those rules for us, but maybe sound might be one of those things which is a little bit more unique. Especially if it's gas powered versus electric or something like that. You had gas powered diesel drones flying all across the city, something that effect. I I don't know. So that that could be well taken.
Uh, I have one more thing. Um, this goes back to uh uh community design. I'm sorry, I didn't do that one. I I'm not sure we went over. That part, but there in in community design as CD dash three, DE and F. They talk about improvements along seventeen eighty-five intersection. Uh, uh, in corridors, pathways and edges and um. I'm not quite sure what the problem is with the intersection seventeen eighty-five, but but it it would seem to me that um. If you're going to pursue that kind of thing, you should be also talking about. The intersections of Santa Mas Expressway, say at at Winchester and other. Streets like Campbell and Hamilton and and even Bud where it's not great. It's, these are, these are entrance ways into the city. And uh you talk a little bit about gateways and so um. The Santa Mas Expressway, for example, at Winchester is is a horrible, horrible, horrible looking place with the overpasses and. The the gravel near the rail road and it just is. You know, people driving into the city from the south, this is the first thing they see in Campbell. So um. I wouldn't mind seeing you, if you're gonna do the seventeen eighty-five thing, it's like uh about adding the expressway in it. Intersections to to clean those those places up, find ways to make those better entry ways into the interior of the city. So that was the one other thing that caught my eye. that was the one other thing that caught my eye.
Great. Thank you.
You know, I, I'll just say real quick, I just follow up on that point. I did like, uh, it was one of Mr. Zister's, uh, Commissioner Zister's number fours was the gateway uh, projects for Campbell. Other than that, a little sign on highway seventeen at the south ramp, welcome to Campbell. I don't think, other than, you know, cruddy little signs, we don't have anything. So I think Commissioner Zister identified a good spot. I think the gateway project should get some priority and actually get, get on there for a time span. Not a, not a huge expense, I don't think. Of course, we want to do it right, but uh, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Awesome. Really, really great feedback. Anything else you'd like to know, Stephen?
The Giants, the Giants won.
But will they win in twenty forty?
Or twenty fifty.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to thank everyone. I think we, we did a great job getting through a lot of material. I mean, I just, it was a tremendous read, tremendous lift. Really good job. I think we did a good job with getting through everything and providing meaningful feedback that we're able to take to the city council here very shortly. So it might be to stay tuned. Cause we're gonna be advancing to the city council on the twenty ninth with uh, more. We'll try to sum this up as best as we can hopefully by that meeting and then um, yeah, we'll, we'll see what we also were able to squeeze in based on out that, the, the feedback that they uh, they gave us at that meeting for later this year. But we're, we're really gonna be changing gears here. So uh, really appreciate the feedback in the general plan and all that kind of good stuff, but now it's gonna be the, the, the main, the main attraction, which is gonna be housing element stuff. And the good news here is it's really gonna be, we're getting in on the ground floor, and we're gonna be doing it policy by policy and hopefully, you know, ge- getting into it. So m- m- more to come, is my point there.
Wonderful.
Great.
Alright, so with that, or uh, I will go ahead and um, Rob, do you have a director's, Director Eastwood, do you have a director's report you'd like to share before I close the meeting?
I don't. It's ten forty-one at night. Thank you all for engaging. And uh, I, I had bets early on. This would have gone later, but thanks for the, the very thoughtful feedback and being efficient with your time.
Well, great, great presentation, Rob and Stephen. There's a lot of work and a lot of thought has gone into that. So you, you helped a lot. The team helped a lot in preparing that in a way we could digest. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Stephen, and thank you, Rob.
Alright, well, with that, I'll close the September fourteenth planning commission meeting and wish you all a good night. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye, everyone.